I'll get that when we get back. Okay, if we could stand for a salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take note that all commissioners are present, and I see that a lot of mics are turned off, so when it comes time to talk, and if we could get those turned on. Are there going to be any agenda changes for today?
No, there are not.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so it looks like we're ready for public comment period, and you're ready to roll.
Well, thank you very much. It's good to be here today. Everybody looks like they're in a good mood, and this is just wonderful. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Dollar General store. We had a wonderful meeting last night with the representative of the applicant, and we made some suggestions. We had a total of four actual residents of West Point, and the rest were from Valley Springs or Redwood Flat Area, and they were very constructive in the comments that they made. I think that went very well. I think staff would agree with me on that, too. There is the question of the environmental document, and whether that's going to be recirculated or not, and I would be willing to give up my time right now. I'd be willing to give up all my time for county counsel, deputy county counsel Julie Moss and Peter to discuss this aloud if they could, or if they couldn't. Peter, are you busy?
They can't discuss it right now because it's public comment period. I'm sorry.
All right, very good. Let's see, how about a story? Back in the 1990s, I had an issue with a neighbor, and I went to this attorney that I knew, and he told me, "Well, what you have to do is talk to the neighbor." And I said, "Why do I have to talk to the neighbor?" And he said, "Well, find out what they want." And I said, "This is my property. This is my money, and this project is going to go through. Why do I care what the neighbors want?" And there is an expletive in there. And this attorney, his name is Jerry Brown, he said, "He's busy these days, so he can't take care of me." And he said, "You know, the key to everything is just to find out what people want." And that's what we did last night, and I was very pleased that we did do that, and I hope Mr. Ladish is happy with the outcome. You take care now.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment for this morning that's not on the agenda? Okay, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda and approval of the minutes for May 11.
I have a question on the minutes. I was under the impression that on each of the agenda items, what the applicant would be a separate listing, not listed under public comment. Is that my wrong on that? On the public hearings, whether the applicant itself, himself or herself, is listed under public comment? Do we have a ... Does it make any difference?
I don't think it makes a difference.
What we're trying to do is just document the record of who spoke, and it's, you know, once we open the public hearing, it's typically, we start off with the applicant, so...
But that's a part of public comment.
It's a part of the public, yeah. It's fine.
Then, great. I have no suggestion.
And then on the agenda itself, we were going to remove item G in the future, just a reminder.
Right.
But we had the second public comment at the last meeting, so even though no one's spoke.
No, on current agenda.
On the current agenda, yeah.
I was just bringing that up. Are there any modifications to the minutes, or do they look good to everybody?
One typo.
Okay. Does Annette know already?
I gave it to him.
Do you want to, for the public record, just go ahead and state what it is?
Yes, top of page five, reference to Deborah Grimes, California Bank of Meowood Resource Specialist should be banned.
I'm having a really hard time hearing you this morning. I don't know if you could pull the mic a little closer? Thank you. Okay, so if there are no other modifications or changes, if we could get a motion to approve?
I shall move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Okay, so today we have a really, really heavy schedule, so we're going to try to stay real tight with the procedures. Presentation by staff will be 15 minutes, 15 minutes from the applicants or appellants. Commissioners can, if we can hold our questions until the presentations are completed, that would be great. Comment period during, or on each hearing will be three minutes per person. So if we want to start with number one, which is 201722 for Wilbur and Carol Smith, and Jean, are you presenting that?
I am.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as we've just been announced, we have an application for a planned development permit for Wilbur and Carol Smith. Their plans are to construct a single-family residence in the Forest Meadows Homeowners Association over on Foxglove Court. Unfortunately, Mr. and Mrs. Smith are victims of the Buick fire. They've chosen to relocate or rebuild their home in Forest Meadows rather than up in District Two. So they've chosen this lot. It's got some little constraints to it, so we'll go ahead and get into that right now. Currently, the parcel is zoned R3 PD, which is multifamily residential with a planned development. As near as we can tell, we believe that the purpose of the PD in this case was to allow the county a mechanism to further regulate the development of a multifamily residential unit. However, the way the code is written, it doesn't allow us the ability to differentiate between the different permitted uses and what shall apply versus what shall apply. So here we are today, we're just looking at this, because a single-family residence is a natural permitted use in the R3 zone. So much like all the other residences or lots that are zoned R3 PD along Foxglove Court, they too have single-family residences, so there are no multifamily residential developments that is actually built upon those R3 parcels. So this particular site has got some additional constraints. We have before us a corner lot. The corner lot actually is compounded with a multiple of different setbacks associated with it that are a little bit different than a standard lot. So standard lots, most lots have an impact of a front and a rear, which possibly, for the most part, are 20 feet, and then we kind of allow for an allowance of a lesser setback on the sides. In this case, all of the road frontage of the parcel, Foxglove actually wraps around the parcel, is going to be considered a 20-foot setback. We've allowed the reduced setback of 10 feet on the other two property lines. See if I can get this thing to work. So this is all Foxglove Court here. This is considered the corner. So the setback, actually, the 20-foot setback impacts this line as well as this line. So we have a 10-foot setback here and a 10-foot setback here. In addition to that, we have this drainage easement that actually takes up a great portion of the, this portion of the, what I would actually consider to be a rear, just for, you know, sake of argument, not necessarily the setback, but for the rear of the lot. Normally, in an R1 zone, if you're building a single-family residence, your setbacks are 20 feet in the front, 20 feet in the rear, but we allow a 5-foot setback on the side. So this parcel is further impacted by the 10-foot setback that's established through the R3 zoning. So we've got, not only lost 10 feet on the side, but we've also lost very valuable space in the rear because of this drainage easement. So that leaves the applicant's very little space compared to the other lots to actually build a home on. So what they propose to build is a two-story home with a total square footage of 2,645 square feet, which actually is the smallest home on that street. So all the other homes are in excess of that square footage. This is still considered to be compatible with the other homes because it is reasonably within size, but it is, in fact, the smallest home that is going to be built on that lot, on that street. So when the applicant sat down with their architect to try to design a reasonable-sized home that fits their needs, this is the design that they actually came up with. Again, we're talking about a split-level home. We've got a two-car, standard two-car garage with approximately 1,278 square feet of main floor living, with an additional 486 square feet of garage space. So, you know, that's a pretty, even if you just look at the lower level, that's kind of actually below, you know, the normal-sized standard home these days, and they're still encroaching into a setback. So based on the fact that, you know, they've attempted to come up with a compatible design that fits the neighborhood, a design that's going to fit the lot, they've just got so many constraints on the property that they just can't seem to manage to build a standard home without needing a variance. So their request was to actually encroach, I believe, 10 feet into the front setback or the corner setback in order to pull away from that easement for which they are absolutely not allowed to encroach upon. These are their side elevations of the house. So when we look at aesthetics, the purpose of the PD is to allow us to further regulate the development of the site, which includes aesthetics. We'd like to see conformity with the rest of the neighborhood. In this case, the Forest Meadows homeowner, the Forest Meadows subdivision is actually enforced through a homeowners association. They have adopted CCNRs. Included in those CCNRs are a set of design guidelines. The county doesn't enforce CCNRs, but for the purpose of this application, we use their design guidelines to help us, guide us through this process. We did circulate the application to the Forest Meadows Homeowners Association in hopes that we would get some kind of response back from their design review committee, for which we have not received anything, not a phone call, not a memo, anything at all. So, you know, in that respect, the owners are still responsible for going before their homeowners association and presenting their designs to the design review committee ultimately for their approval, but we feel that through our evaluation, we've analyzed that what they're proposing is actually very compatible and consistent with the guidelines and the other homes in the area. They're using light materials. The height of the building is not exceeding the CCNRs 30-foot height limitation. In the code, we actually allow 45 feet, but they're coming in at a mere 27 feet high, which is, happens to be, like I said, below the CCNRs. So they're fine on the building height. The building materials are like all the other buildings on that street, using similar roofing materials, siding materials, et cetera. They have yet to choose any colors, but they will have to go before their architectural review committee to get their colors approved, but I don't really think that's something that's necessarily within our purview at this time. So at this point, we do feel that what they are proposing is compatible in the area. It seems to be consistent with the CCNRs homeowners association design guidelines, and we do feel that there are circumstances in which we have the ability to approve a variance to allow the construction of this home and allowing it to encroach into the 10-foot corners front setback. Here's aerial photography of the neighborhood. You can see Foxglove Court running here. The little circled area is the approximate location of their lot. Similar, all these other lots adjacent to it are built with single-family residences, as said before. The lot immediately adjacent to them is vacant. This is the cul-de-sac that runs down, Foxglove Court actually runs through the front of the property, and then kind of has a little cul-de-sac here and then back out, so it doesn't go all the way through. It's just a court. So they do have some constraints. It is a very difficult property for them to build upon, but this is their wish, and we think that it is an approvable project. So with that, our recommendation to you is that you approve the planned development, allowing them to go before their homeowners association with their plans, and hopefully start construction of their homes soon.
Thank you, Jean. Does anybody have any questions?
I just, for clarification's sake, would it be a problem for the planning commission to add a condition to the resolution?
Like what?
To the effect, "This approval does not relieve the landowner from any need to obtain approval from the Forest Meadows Architectural Review Committee"? Just so nobody's saying we're trying to usurp them, or...
Sure. It was explained in the report, but if that makes everyone...
I don't, are we missupposed to reference this?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary, and it sort of gets us into...
It goes problems for them.
Yeah, they have to do it anyway. It's outside of our purview, really. You know, we do not enforce the CCNRs, and I think that, you know, they're going to have to do it anyway. I want to clarify one thing. Jean mentioned variance a couple times, and we don't have a variance application before you, but the planned development process allows for the varying of the standards, and so the tool that we're using here that, to, it's broader than simply a variance, but it allows us to modify the setback requirements. And so the findings necessary to approve a variance are, is not necessary here because of the planned development overlay zones and the findings necessary to approve the planned development. So I just wanted to clarify that point.
Yes, thank you for that, because the application does say it's a request for a variance and lists some required findings that are not in the resolution, but I think you've now explained why that's so.
Any further questions? Okay, is the applicant, or a representative of the applicant up here, would you like to come up and speak? Thank you.
Oh, I think it's been presented pretty clearly.
If you could state your name at the mic, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm Carol Smith, and I don't really have much to add other than the fact that we are having to restrict our design to keeping us on the first floor, and our sleeping quarters need to be on the first floor because we're both having mobility problems, and we're just building the second floor for relatives who come to visit, or maybe caretakers at a later time. And, you know, we're going to have accessible features throughout the house. It's going to be basically an accessible house. That's a first-floor house that we're going to actually be living in, with just upstairs for guests if we ever have them. And that's about it. Otherwise, it was presented quite well.
Any questions from the commissioners? Thank you very much. Okay, does the public have any comment on this project?
Good morning. Colleen Platt with Valley Springs. Just a question, basically. We support this, the project, no problem. I have a question on the zoning, the PD zoning. It's R3 PD, correct?
It's R3, yes.
Okay, and so that will remain R3 with a single-family home build on it?
Yes, so the zoning won't change. They haven't requested a zone change, but a single-family residence is permitted in the R3 zone. Obviously, with the construction of a single-family residence on this lot, there's no additional room for any further development of the parcel. So you, unless someone were to come in, you know, subsequent to this and actually convert it into a multifamily residential unit somehow, they would then have to go back through the PD process. But this process just allows them to, construction of the single-family residence in the R3 zone.
And you said other, this has happened in other R3 multifamilies only parcels that single-family would go?
Yeah, so all the parcels along Foxglove Court are zoned R3 PD, for which those houses as well went through the planned development permit process.
And do those, maybe you or Mr. Marlowe know that, do those R3 zones always stay there, or are they ever rezoned to what the actual use is to single-family?
Well, again, the use of a single-family residence is permitted
Right.
in a multifamily residential zone, so they're not rezoned. I suppose if the Forest Meadows Homeowners Association wanted to propose a rezone of those parcels to better reflect the actual development, they could certainly do so, but the county isn't going to require
Right.
individuals to come forth and do that, and I don't think there would really be any need for us to initiate a zoning.
I was just, I was just thinking, in the general plan update process, we talked about going through the zoning code afterward and changing it, and would that, just somewhere down the road, wouldn't it be more accurate to show that these R3 parcels are not R3, they're actually, you know, single-family, and I was just wondering if that would ever happen in the future?
Not necessarily, because we have a lack of multiple-family homes that are more affordable. I'd prefer that zones stay there for people that want to build a duplex or a triplex and have more options to it.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, obviously, that would be a separate issue, and I'm going to, I'm going to keep it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious about that, whether it would change.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, if there's no further public comment, no rebuttals, then we'll, we have nothing further to say.
Your recommendation?
Pardon me?
You want your recommendation?
Please.
Okay. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2017-047, approving 2017-022 planned development permit for the design of a single-family residence in the R3 PD zone based upon the findings included therein.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any comments on the resolution? You're all good? Okay, well then, can we get a motion to accept?
Who will accept it?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to...
Before this action is final, unless appealed within 15 days, 15 calendar days, to the board of supervisors.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is an extension of time for Sherri Shively and Miguel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ready?
Ready.
All right, so good morning to the planning commission. This is Miguel Contreras with the planning department, here to present an extension of time for Sherri Shively for tentative parcel map 2005-125. Good context, 80-acre subject parcel is located at 5816 Highway 12 in Wallace. On May 1st, 2007, the board of supervisors approved tentative, this tentative parcel map. It was initially given its 36 months to record, and... It was given its 36 months to record, and throughout time, it's, it granted, it got granted seven more years of automatic extension through the passages of Assembly Bill 333208116, as well as Senate Bill 1185 making its new expiration date, May 1st of this year. Sherri Shively applied for an extension of time in a timely fashion, two months prior to the expiration date, which meets the county code. And so county code 16.08.4.8 does not expressly require any, any specific findings in terms of a good faith effort. However, the planning commission, as well as the planning department, has consistently taken a good faith effort into account in terms of granting these extensions of time. So just a quick rundown of the progress that the applicant has made in meeting the conditions of this extension. She has drilled four wells on each of the parcels that are, that were created with this parcel map. There has been preliminary soil work for construction of septic systems. Engineers have been hired for the septic systems, as well as for the onsite road system, as well as encroachment from the state highway. Ms. Shively has also submitted to me this morning a permit for road encroachment by Cal or Caltrans. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the original tentative parcel map back in 2007. The negative declaration was circulated for 30 days for public comment. At this point, planning department believes that there is nothing new that would change the findings of the board and, or change anything in terms of the negative declaration. And that's about it that I have to present, if there's any questions.
I just want to make clear that there is no necessity for us making a good faith effort finding in this case.
Once more, the county code does not expressly state that it's necessary.
That we could just, we could exercise our discretion to grant this extension without such a good faith finding?
That's the way the code reads, yes.
Do we know the output of the wells?
At this point, they're still pending final inspection, so top of my head, I don't, I don't have that information.
The request for two years versus three years, would she be allowed a three-year extension? I know it's been 10 years already.
The county has the ability to grant up to six years of extensions. They could be six individual one-year extensions. They could be one single six-year extension. We have just, we just recently started having to look at extensions because the timeframe for the automatic extensions that were granted by the state have pretty much run out. So the projects that were approved, you know, earlier on, back in 2007, 2008, before those extensions were applied, are now beginning to come, to catch up with these projects. We believe that two years is a reasonable amount of time, that, you know, I mean, the initial approval timeframe is three years. I think by granting additional time, it, we'd want to be able to have a chance to go back and sort of periodically look at it and see, you know, are there changes, are there changes in circumstances? We're getting a new general plan, hopefully, within the next year, so that could change things. There could be new issues associated with traffic circulation and environmental issues that we might want to look at. So I think two years is a reasonable amount of time for someone to complete a project that actually has been around now for almost eight years, so...
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, is the presenter or representative for Sherri Shively here?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. I'm Robin Peters with Cal State Engineering, and I'm representing Sherri Shively this morning. Staff report did a good job of giving an overview. I'd like to clarify a couple of things. Pardon me, in the staff report, Sherri has, she hired us back in '09 to start working on this project shortly after it was originally approved, and she's been diligently working on satisfying the conditions ever since. We did all of the wastewater work, beginning in '09, and working into '10 and '11, and then she had the roads designed and the Caltrans encroachment designed. The staff report indicates that an engineer was hired to do that. I just want to point out that those designs are actually complete, and she actually has an encroachment permit and is ready to construct. So she's gone, probably in terms of percentage, she's probably gone 90% of the way through satisfying all the conditions, and now it's really boiled down to a matter of construction. The weather was lousy last year, so we're facing the point where we need a little bit of additional time to actually do the construction and get the map recorded. So this is one of those unusual maps that is almost done and just needs a little bit more time to complete things. Somebody asked about wells. I do have the well completion reports. The men, there are four wells, four new wells. Minimum yield is 40 gallons a minute, and the maximum 80 gallons a minute, according to the well completion reports. Two years versus three, we did request three years. We understand the feeling of the department to take another look at things in two years. That's fine. We expect to complete things very shortly, because most of the permitting, design and permitting has been done, and again, as I indicated before, it's mostly a matter of construction at this point. So we'll accept the two years, and I think by then we'll be all done. be all, all done. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your clarifications because I was really questioning whether anything of substance had been done until six months ago, so I'm much more comfortable with this now.
This one's very close, very close.
When you're talking about the construction, you're referencing road construction?
Roads and, and the Caltrans encroachment, that's right, that's right.
Okay, Caltrans encroachment's done, so there wouldn't be a need for further study if you went quickly on this one?
Right.
Okay, all right. Is there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
Good morning again, Colleen Platt. We were slightly involved in this years ago, so this is interesting, it's coming forward. And I thank Robin Peters for clarifying that, and the staff for clarifying exactly Tim's questions, that this has been worked on since 2009 and they have been work, you know, making project and they did get the encroachment permit, which the staff report was kind of unclear on that, so thank you for the further information and we support this extension of time also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, any rebuttals?
None.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and close the hearing, bring it back to the commission. Anybody have any further comments?
No.
You want to read the resolution?
So, the recommendation is to pass a motion to sign Resolution 2007-042 approving a two-year extension for tentative parcel map 2005-125.
Thank you. New motion?
So moved.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you. We are moving quickly. All right, item number three, 20, 2017-013 enlargement of non-conforming building and sequoia exemption for Johannes Tounen. And Scott, are you got this one?
I do.
All right, let's do it.
All right. As you said, this is 2017-13, large non-conforming building for Johannes Tounen. Description, I'll get in more into this later, but pursuant to Section 1792-020, this is to approve, to enlarge a non-conforming building. It is located at 3127 Bow Drive in Copperopolis. Here is aerial. The garage questions the blue structure here and is adjacent to Mr. Tounen's residence, which is on an adjacent parcel or not on the same parcel. Parcel where the garage is located is Zone R1. Garages and carports are listed as permitted accessory structures in R1, not as permitted primary structures in R1. So, to grant a building permit for such, you have to have a primary structure on the parcel, which this lot does not. As stated before, the dwelling is on the adjacent parcel. So, a garage is permitted on this lot in 1998. It is unclear why it was originally approved, but it was and we have to treat it as an existing non-conforming structure. Also, there was a carport, an attached carport constructed on the garage. There's no record of a separate permit for the carport, which is where the problem comes in. Mr. Tounen recently bought both parcels and he wants to make needed repairs to the carport, but unfortunately, the building permit that's on file is for the garage and not carport. So, here's the building permit that was issued. Now, the problem with all the building permits is the plans don't, plans aren't saved in the permit, just the, that it was permitted. So, there's no original building plans on file. However, there is a compaction report on file that shows the footprint of the structure and based on that is what we use to see what was and wasn't permitted on property. So, if you take the aerial photo and do, do a little magic here, you enlarge it up, spin it around, so it's the same orientation as the compaction report and compare it to the compaction report, you can see what was and wasn't permitted. So, there is another carport on the back end of the garage, but it appears to be within the footprint that was originally permitted in the original building permit. So, what we're looking at here is this bottom, or actually, it's top in real orientation, but on this picture, the, the bottom section here, there's just the, the carport. And that is, since it's attached to the garage, we can call it an expansion of the structure and, and so, as I said before, legally existing buildings, they can be repaired and maintained, but they have to be in the same size and same footprint. Now, going back to Section 1792-020, there is an allowance to expand a non-conforming building if the Planning Commission approves said expansion, which is why I'm here today. So, this is the area we're talking about, these, these are the plans that he submitted. They're going to be the plans that will be part of his building permit once that is submitted and it's, we have the, the garage, the back carport there and he wants to repair and make his carport better and safer and conform better to his garage with the same footprint. Here's the other elevations, back view and front view, so, and it's this area here. This is exempt from CPO regulations due to Section 15301E1, which allows an exemption for fifty, if the increase of no more than fifty percent of the floor area of original structure, which this fits well within. And as such, I recommend that we approve the expansion of this garage. Any questions?
I just have a question as to what the definition of repair is, in that the plans would indicate that it's the new carport, but it's using the existing slab and is that enough to call it a repair?
Well, the fact that it's, what we're approving really is more enlargement of the existing non-conforming structure. So, whether it's new or a repair, that is a question that is fairly up for debate, but I don't think it is really pertinent per se to a requirement of whether or not you can and cannot approve it.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay, is the applicant here today or a representative? Mr. Tounen or Mrs.?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you please come up to the mic, please? Can you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Johannes Tounen.
Okay, and did you have any further information you'd like to provide to us?
Yeah, I was kind of surprised that I found out from Scott that the carports were not permitted because prior to purchasing the, the property, I called Building Department and they told me that the garage has been permitted and signed off on it, so I was really surprised about that new. I just wanted to upgrade the front and the back of the garage to make it a little bit more appealing and in the same structure as the garage is constructed. That's all.
I just, I find it admirable that you are in a nice heavily wooded area, you might be able to slide this through without permits and you're doing the right thing and I appreciate that.
Well, me and my wife, we want to do the right thing. We, we don't want to get in troubles for doing things what is illegal, so I hope you understand that and consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this project?
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Staff. Ray Waller, McCollum &amp; Hill. First off, I support this project one hundred percent and that's not an issue. I would like to address a statement in the staff report on page three and Scott mentioned it already, that it's unclear as to why the building permit was approved for the garage in 1998. I thought I might give you a little history lesson as to why. I came to the county in 1985 as the head of the Building Department. At that time, and prior to me getting here, there was a lot of garages issued barns on parcels that had no house. Then, in 1986, they were currently undergoing a revision to the general plan and the zoning code. And it came out and it said exactly what Scott was saying, that it, you know, you're talking about an accessory structure and the, but the planning director at that time and county council at that time, after this was approved, it kind of slipped through the cracks that they, that's not exactly what they wanted. The county at that time wanted an orderly development of a parcel. So, what would happen, people would come in and get a garage. Eventually, if they needed a septic, they would put a septic in. If they needed a well, they would do that, they would get power, all in the hopes that finally they would have a, a lot that they could develop, put their house on, retirement, those type of things. So, the county wanted that to continue. So, after this came out in 1986, it was acknowledged by planning and council that that was a mistake, I didn't mean to say that. So, their policy was to continue that. So, this continued until the late or mid nineties when I became the planning director and we continued that. Again, it was just one of those things we never got to. You have a laundry list of things you need to change over the years, it never happened. After 2000, after I stepped back into the building official position, all the subsequent planning directors continued the same policy. So, it was just one of those things that slipped through the crack and now you have hundreds and hundreds of these parcels out there that have garages that don't have a primary residence on there. And one of the things that was driving why they would allow that, let's imagine you have, you're a rancher, you've got a thousand acre ranch. A lot of times, these ranches are made up of multiple parcels and you only have one house on this large ranch, but you might want to have a barn on the north forty. Well, now, if you, if you literally enforced this, you'd have to build a house over there on that piece of property that you don't want to use the house, but you got to have a barn. So, what your, what this, the way that it's enforced is people are actually building barns and garages and shops without permits, so yeah, I'd like to see something like this changed because that would be a win-win for the county because people didn't get permits, everybody gets to do what they want on their property, so. Anyway, that's all I have. Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm living testimony to this. Back in 1993, Ray issued me a permit for a garage structure barn and that permit's still open today, by the way. I do a little bit of work on it and go into the planning and keep it, keep it, get it inspected and keep it open. This is just typical for what was going on back then. What you'd do is you'd buy a, buy a lot, put a, put a structure on it, store your equipment, store what you wanted to hide from whoever your mate was at the time in the city and just, and just do that. And eventually, the idea was that you'd have a house there or that you had developed that property, so that's really happened.
Thank you. Is there any further comment on this? Okay, do you have any rebuttals for anything? Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners. Well, first, we'll have you read the recommendation.
All right, I recommend that the Planning Commission pass a motion to sign Resolution 2017-048 approving 2017-013 enlargement of non-conforming building for Johannes Tounen.
Thank you. Okay, can we get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you. It'll be done by lunch, Peter. Okay, moving on to item number four on the agenda, 2016-216, Ben Jackson Gunderson, denial of commercial cannabis. And Scott, are you also handling this one?
Yes.
Thank you.
As you just said, this is an appeal of the planning director's denial of commercial cannabis cultivation registration, 2016-216. The appeal is submitted by Ben Gunderson on behalf of Mighty Provisions. This parcel is located off of Sheep Ranch Road, APN 0340098. The parcel is not addressed. It is near the Mineral Mountain subdivision. A little bit of background on this application, registration. It was submitted on June 17th, 2016 for Ben Gunderson of Mighty Provisions. The initial inspection on this property was January 12th, 2017. There were numerous violations that were observed by the Coke compliance official and a notice of correction was issued on January 18th, 2017. There's a little bit of back and forth between the applicant and Coke compliance between January 31st and January, and February 1st that year and a second inspection was conducted on March 14th, 2017. At that inspection, many violations were still present on site, although a few had been remedied. As a result of those violations, Coke compliance recommended that the planning department denied the application. The file was subsequently reviewed by planning staff to double-check everything to see if there was anything else going on with the file and some additional violations were found, which included lack of compliance with water quality control board and the grading that occurred after the May 10th deadline. Application was then denied on March 24th of this year and for the following reasons: failure to meet security standards, failure to meet generator standards, camping on the property, unpermitted trailer on the property, grading after May 10th of 2017, and failure to comply with the water board and the timeframe specified in its ordinance. Appeal letter was submitted by Ben Gunderson on April 10th this year. He states that the foreman tasked with ordinance compliance has been removed from the site and then addressed each reason for denial, denial letter, which we will go through in this presentation. First reason mentioned in the, in the appeal letter is the security standards. The Coke compliance recommendation states that in January 12th inspection, that nobody is present at the site, oh, sorry for the typo there, during this inspection, that there is an incomplete fence and no locks. On the second inspection on March 14th, the recommendation states that during this inspection, nobody was on site again, gates were left unlocked and wide open and locks had been placed on the gate although they were not being used. Here are pictures of the unattended site with open gates. Again, another open gate. Here's a gate that has actually been taken off of the fence post and is laying on the ground. On the reinspection on March 14th, here's the front gate to the property open, another gate with, that is unlocked. Here's an open gate. Here is a gate with a lock not attached to anything. Another open gate here on the side and a lock still in the package attached to the The appeal letter states, the entire perimeter of the farm has a six-foot fence and all gates are fenced with locks. We do have locks present on all gates and we have provided locks on all access points to both cultivation area and the property access gates. The ordinance ordinance states in the requirement for gates and locks that it is to prevent access by trespassers and children and it is planning staff's interpretation that unlocked and open gates cannot prevent against access and therefore is a violation of the ordinance. And therefore is a violation of the ordinance, just having gates and locks. If you don't use them, they don't count. Moving on to the next reason for denial, generator standards. Coke compliance recommendation states that on the January twelfth inspection, that they had unhoused generator leaking fuel onto the ground. And the March fourteenth inspection states that they had unhoused generators. Uh, we've gone to pictures, uh, January twelfth, here's the generator with, uh, fuel containers next to generator. Uh, oop, skipped one. There's another generator back there. Put a circle around it so you can see it better. Uh, unhoused. And another generator, unhoused. On the March fourteenth inspection, here's a generator that was put up on a pallet, uh, but is not in any sort of housing. A second generator. And the appeal letter states that generator is housed and will comply with the county's noise ordinance. While in the past they have been unhoused for transport, to our knowledge, generators were always rehoused for use. And generators are always run while inside of a noise-producing housing, generators are only, are only outside their respective boxes when they are being moved around the property. Oh, the urgency ordinance requires generators be housed in insulated shed of some sort. And simple, um, explanation of our denial is that coke compliance officer was at the site and saw unhoused generators. The coke compliance officer needs to take things at face value. There is no one present at the site to question. But there's no way to prove that these generators were moved every time they wanted to turn them off. Uh, so they recommended denial based on, on that. Moving on to the next reason for denial, camping on the site. The coke compliance recommendation states that at January twelfth inspection, there were multiple tents on-site being used. And on March fourteenth inspection, the tents were removed. However, uh, there were four new sheds on the property, and one is being used for living and sleeping, uh, with propane heater inside and hazard selection. Uh, so, January twelfth inspection, uh, pictures of the tents being used for camping. On the March fourteenth inspection, in one of the sheds, they were still camping on the property, they just moved into a shed. Appeal letter states, "All camping equipment has been removed from site and any all, and all camping equipment has been or is being removed." Camping in, in the code is permitted on a property fourteen days in a row and not to exceed thirty days per year. Um, the tents were removed after the initial inspection, however camping had not ceased on the property, uh, as evidenced by the camping inside of the shed. And there were sixty-one days between the inspections, um, which is twice the length as allowed by, by the code. The next violation is grading after May tenth, twenty sixteen. Um, upon review of aerial imagery, staff determined that grading had occurred on the site at some point between May thirty-first and June ninth, twenty sixteen. Urge ordinance expressly prohibits any grading, uh, for expanding cultivation area after May tenth. So here is the site plan that was submitted. Uh, you can see down here in the bottom of cultivation site. Here is a zoom in, uh, on another, uh, site plan that's submitted to us that shows better where the cultivation area is in this bottom portion of the parcel. And aerial imagery on May thirty-first shows about the same, same spot, about the same area that they were talking about. Um, you can tell there's that, there's been some definite land disturbance here, uh, for cultivation. And to compare it to before this occurred, we have aerial from twenty fourteen showing the same area. So again, this is the area that they, they disturbed the ground. This is area over here. While there are no trees, if you go back to May thirty-first of twenty sixteen, you could tell this area was not disturbed. Just this area here. Now, go ahead ten more days to June ninth, twenty sixteen. And there's definite grading outside of that initial area. And if you go ahead to August of twenty sixteen, there was cultivation within that newly graded area. So the site was definitely, um, expanded for the use of cultivation. Uh, the appeal letter states that we are currently filing for all grading permits and are actively engaged in filing for any necessary permits. Um, however, the urge ordinance is very clear regarding grading. Uh, there is no additional grading or earth removal for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May tenth, twenty sixteen. Doesn't matter if you get permits or not. Can't do it. Uh, the next reason for denial addressed in the appeal letter is unpermitted trailers. Uh, coke compliance recommendation states that on the second inspection on March fourteenth, the trailer, there was a trailer with no permit draining into a small pit dug in the ground. Um, here's a picture of the observed trailer, uh, with their discharge line leading to a pit. Uh, appeal letter states, "The RV was temporarily camping for our cleanup operations and is now being moved off-site, and the trailer is being moved off-site." Urge ordinance requires trailers to be permitted in some way, um, when used beyond the timeframe allowed for camping. Uh, there is no permit of any kind on file for this trailer with the building permit or planning, um, or building department or planning. The maximum amount allowed camping on the property already been exceeded by this point, um, due to what we already discussed earlier. And the trailer was still on the site as the date of the appeal letter, um, because they stated that it was being removed from the site, that not, not that it had been removed from the site. And that's twenty-seven days after the March fourteenth inspection. So it'll be on the property for at least twenty-seven days. And regardless of any camping provisions or permitting, discharge in such a manner into a pit is illegal and not permissible. Uh, the final reason for denial that's addressed in the appeal letter is water board compliance. Appeal letter states that with regards to compliance with the Central Valley Water Quality Control Board, we will assemble and provide a copy of the required documentation, which has already been obtained, see attached. Um, attached to the letter is a copy of an email. It is unclear who the email is to or from. It states, it says, "Payment status paid, payment method web," um, but it doesn't state a person is water quality control board, even that it's from or to the water quality control board. Planning staff emailed our contact, water quality control board. Copy of that email chain is, um, in your packets. And they stated that there is no paperwork or payment submitted for APN, the APN in question, or for Ben Gunderson, or for Mighty Provisions. Um, so as such, we have to, um, assume that they are not in compliance with water quality control board as of the date of this email, let alone September seventh, twenty sixteen. So, to sum things up, the application was denied due to failure to meet urgency ordinance standards, um, which include grading after the May tenth deadline, failure to comply with the water quality control board by the September seventh deadline, and failure to meet site standards. They had sixty-one days between first and second inspections to make needed improvements. Um, between the time that they turned in their application and the second inspection was two hundred and seventy days. They were not able to make those, uh, meet those standards during that timeframe, and as such, they were denied. Uh, and we recommend that you deny the appeal and uphold the planning director's decision.
You have thirty seconds left.
I got through it.
Okay, is there a representative here? If you could state your name for the record, please.
Thank you for your time. Uh, I can only imagine what you were thinking when you saw those pictures. Probably the same thing I was thinking. When I saw them, I wanted to give you guys some backstory here. I'm from, originally from a small town in Michigan, um, now in San Diego. But I've been coming up here for, um, about seven years now. Fell in love with this place, and prior to last summer, we had been approached by somebody who offered us an investment opportunity to be a part of a cultivation here. We were way too hands-off, and I kind of reluctantly became the, the point man for this operation, and, um, you know, at the time, but kind of seemed too good to be true. And, uh, that, that was definitely the case. Things turned out to be, uh, pretty disastrous for us, um, over the course of the year. Those first pictures that Mr. Spear showed of the property was what we found, the, the condition of the property being at the end of the year, when we had, um, essentially realized that we'd been ripped off. So, since then, it's been, um, a pretty daunting process of trying to, uh, step one was clean up the site, um, learn about what, you know, exactly is involved with all of the permitting and, and being in compliance. We were way over our heads. And, um, working full-time in San Diego, it's made it that much more difficult to, um, have the time to be up here. And we're trying to do things ourselves now because, um, lack of trust and, uh, finding help up here, so... Um, with that said, we currently have been, it's, it's been a dream, I'm a dreamer, excuse me. A little nervous, obviously. We wanted to build a house up here to be part of this community. And, um, we wanted to do this right, and we're trying to take all of these steps that we can to, um, to kind of regain your trust, um, and move forward. I'm of the belief that, that hopefully someday this will be regulated. Obviously, based on this, regulation is, is absolutely necessary, and, um, we, we, we know, and I, I feel and know in my heart that this could be done a, a right way. Where we don't end up with situations like this, but nevertheless, we're, we're trying to, to remedy this situation here. Currently, we've been working with pretty much every type of engineer, geotechnical engineers, um, with Young Dog Concert, uh, consultants. Uh, we have a, a project manager, an architect. If you look in the, um, I believe the packets that you have, you see that we have plans for a house that we did want to move forward with. Part of getting the trailers is neither this we've been. We thought that we'd have, um, permit for a house in, submitted at this point in time, but that required kind of a cascade of every, every different, uh, engineer, civil engineers, um, for grading. We're very close to having grading plans. We're trying to remediate what was done before, and, um, especially with all the water this past year. We need to, uh, make sure that everything with water, uh, water board is up to date. I would like to refute that we don't have the payment, because part of that email, I'll have to, they took the twenty-five hundred dollars from my bank account, so, um, I need to, I guess, you know, forward or print out a different copy of that receipt. But we, but we did make that payment. We've been working with the natural consultants, um, rather than natural investigators. They've done reports, and we have a plan going forward of, uh, what we need to do to be compliant with the water board, and the grading plans, and the amendments that were put forth by the natural investigators. Uh, we do have that paperwork, and we do plan on, on make sure that everything's passed along. Uh, but really, you know, I, I'm not crazy. I'm gonna expect you guys to reverse this appeal. But what I would like to do for the record was, I was hoping that we could get another inspection, a third inspection. I don't know, um, if that's possible or not, but it's something that we would like and that we'd like to ask for. Uh, because we do think that, um, we, we'd like to show you guys around, and you can see that the, the site is in, in compliance. I have pictures of what it looks like. It's night and day from those original pictures that you saw. In terms of, uh, one more thing, I just realized I forgot to mention. Getting, uh, power for PG&E has been like point teeth. Um, I feel like in, in due time, um, within a couple months, we could have plans for a house and power. No generators, no camping. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to think that we could really turn this into, um, a model for what farms should be. Organic, uh, sustainable farms with people who want to work with, with the county. I apologize for how this has worked out, and it's regrettable, and, um, wish it would have been different, but I'd like to kind of let you guys know, um, what was happening on our side of things. We don't want to jeopardize our position going forward with being able to cultivate. So, I guess, thank you for, for your time, and if we have any questions or...
I have a question for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
You said that you have a receipt that you paid the water board. Do you have a copy of the, any of the paperwork, the application? Anything saying that it was done before September seventh or on September seventh?
I have emails, yes.
Do you have them with you?
Um, I, no, I do not have that right now.
Were they done before September seventh?
Absolutely, yeah. And I, and I do have email receipts that I can forward.
Do you have a phone with you that you can show them on?
Yes. Um, it would take, it would take a minute.
Well, that's warming up.
I'm sorry.
As I understand, you, you are on this application as the named applicant, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then, as I understand what you're saying now, is that you became more active on the ground around the first of this year?
Yes, sir. Yes.
So you, you were, uh, around, or at least in the, it was during your air, in, in, in your time of activity that both of these inspections were done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do you know if any of the grading that was done after, uh, uh, May tenth of last year, was any of that needed because of the seventy-five foot setback requirement?
It's, it was, it was not needed, and it was, um, it was not the plan. Um, I, I don't understand what happened, why they didn't need to do that. They could have put pods on the ground. It was not something that we'd wanted. Uh, again, like I said, a lot of this, uh, we, the, the individual who had approached us in the beginning was a cultivator and sold us on compliance, and that he, he knew what he was doing. And when I say we're hands-off, I, I, I've run a business in San Diego that takes up more, more enough of my time. This was just more of like a side investment. And I knew I needed to have my name in the paperwork, and, uh, we'd had Mighty Provisions, so... As far as grading, I, to be honest, didn't know about any of that at the time, or that it was out of code or anything. So, I know it's not a very legitimate excuse, but that was reality for us at the time.
That's a fact, and I appreciate your statement there.
On the grading, was there marijuana planted on the newly graded areas?
Yes, sir, on those, they, they had created these rows and, um, planted in those rows. And, and so the grading really was just kind of some shallow trenches. I've since talked to the, to the guy who had done that, um, our previous foreman. His rationale was that he thought that since he was just grading, um, he, he thought he was within compliance based on how deep the trenches were, that the soil wasn't going offsite, and it, it was less than an acre. But he, he didn't know what he was talking about. He didn't. Because I've since looked into the grading ordinance, and I know, I know that's not the case.
Was there, was there camping in a portable shed or a tent on this property?
Was there?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Did that exceed fourteen days in a row?
Yes, sir.
Are you Mighty Farms LLC?
We are Mighty Provisions. Mighty Farms is the, in, in a way, sir, Mighty Farms has the property. In a way, sir, Mighty Farms has the property. Mighty Provisions was the LLC that was applying.
I don't see the name Mighty Provisions except on an email at the very end of this paperwork we have. The appellant that we show is you, or the applicant. But then it shows Mighty Farms. It doesn't show Mighty Provisions. So, can you explain that?
That's a typo on my part. It's supposed to be Mighty Provisions.
Not Mighty Farms.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I had me nervous there for a second.
With respect to the generators that were shown in the photographs as not being in a shed or a house, what was the reason to transport them from one place to another?
Just for using tools around the property. And they would, you know, just move them around as they see fit to do different projects. And I don't know why they didn't just move them in the box. I think it was just easier to move the generator than move the box and move it at once. But I don't have much else of a rationale for that.
On the generators, they were stated that they were just in transit when they were out there. And yet, one of the pictures shows rigid white pipe leading up to the generator. Does not look as if it's in transit. Must have been connected to a pump or something like that. It's not in a house?
There probably were times when they were not housed. I really am not up there for day-to-day operations. I don't... It's kind of probably what it looks like from these guys' point of view to come up here and see the state of affairs of things. And I'll tell you what we're really looking for, too, is getting PG&E to hook us up to the grid here. So, we... Generators have been troublesome, to say the least. But everyone who's on the farm has been instructed to lock these gates and to keep the generators in the boxes. And that hasn't been the case and that's aggravating.
Back to the horse that I was riding a minute ago, Mighty Farms, Mighty Provisions. Your letter of April of this year uses the term Mighty Farms.
That was probably a mistake on our part, sir. From crafting that, you should have said Mighty Provisions.
So, there is an LLC involved in this operation and it's Mighty Provisions?
Ben Smith is one of my business partners. He and I bought this land and put the land into Mighty Farms.
Mighty Farms?
Mighty Farms. And we then used the name Mighty Provisions, which was the LLC that we use for... Is this correct?
Yeah. The business information we have on file is for Mighty Provisions. Mighty Farms does come up with some of the land ownership things, but as far as business entities, Mighty Provisions. That's where the... Yeah, it's somewhat confusing because they're so close.
Registration application.
Registration application says Mighty Provisions.
I'm sorry about the confusion. We confuse ourselves even sometimes with having those names to be similar, but there's... That was the issue I slipped ahead. Sorry for the confusion.
Is there any further questions?
No.
Okay. Well, you can have a seat and we'll go and hear from the public at this time.
Please, please, John.
Thank you. Does anybody have any public comment?
My name is Joshua Roman. I would like to state that I was working for the foreman on this farm last season and would like to vouch for the fact that this man constantly kept Mr. Gunderson in the dark about the operation while constantly reassuring him he was doing everything to bring the property into compliance while simultaneously siphoning all of Mr. Gunderson's funds throughout the season for express purposes to bring the property into compliance and was using them for his own private gain on a property outside the county at the end of the season took off, leaving the property in complete shambles and leaving Mr. Gunderson to pick up all the pieces. He is actually a victim of a crafty con man and I just hope you take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Marie Perry Smith. I am married to Benjamin Smith. We own the land and we have also been coming up to Calaveras County for years and to Murphy's. And we're charmed by the town and the people and have been a part of the festivals and fairs. And when we were approached with this opportunity, it just... It seemed... It just seemed like everything we wanted, given that he and my husband, they're from a small town in Michigan. I'm from an even smaller town in Michigan. And, you know, we come from backgrounds of carpenters and farmers and GM workers. And when we came into this county, we felt a kinship. So, when we got this opportunity, we thought, oh, this is going to be great. We're going to be able to use profits from the cultivation to develop this property and to put a house on it and to be a part of this community and to see where everything's going to go. And we didn't go about it the right way, admitting our naivety in that we put our faith too much in other people. And our parents taught us better. So, we are going to continue cultivating... We're going to continue with our development of the property. We're going to put the building on the property. We're going to put the house on the property. We're going to see this project through with our structural engineers, our civil engineers, our geotechnical engineers, all of the things that we're learning now to develop the property Just because the funds are from the cultivation, which it would be lovely to have those to help us develop the property, it isn't, in my mind, crushing my dream of being a part of a small town again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I also have an appeal coming up, but I'd like to make a comment on this.
Would you like to state your name for the record?
I'm Steve Snowden. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Check. This is another case that I've seen in learning. We're all learning. This is new to us. The decisions whether or not they're going to put a ban, they are going to put the ban, whether to put the money out and the outlay for the project for good faith. And the rules have been a little bit obscured by... So, I personally think that if a person's put out good faith, in your judgment, to try and have fallen victim to... As they have, I think they should have another shot at it, given a shot to do it right this time. You never know. You know, it's a learning process all the way around. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Susan Hardenbrook. I am a neighbor. I've never met these people, but I own property that borders theirs. There are seven, well, actually, I guess just six, commercial grows that border my property. They are just one. And I have had trouble with only one of those. These people have the beginning of a creek that goes through my property into Indian Creek. And the pictures that are... I've seen of this are horrendous. But I want you to know that the water that flows through my property to this creek, which I call, it's a no-name creek, but it's been flowing a lot this year. There has been no runoff. There has been no dirt coming down this creek. There has been no evidence of any... Anything that's causing more growing, which I have one other property, which you're seeing today, is causing lots of runoff and lots of dirt coming down the creek. Their property has had absolutely no runoff that I have seen whatsoever and the water has flowed strongly this year. So, I would see it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. When you're saying that, do you think it's damned above you?
No, no, no. I don't think it's damned above me. The water is flowing freely.
Okay.
From their property through mine. And I have seen no evidence of any problems whatsoever coming down this creek.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
The Wilsons, District One, I don't know these people at all, but they're part of our community. They're part of the people that came in and registered. Did everybody follow the directions to the best of their ability for the most part? Are there shady people that came in and gained the trust of people and then deceived them and ripped them off? Undoubtedly. Are they to be blamed for that, for their lack of knowledge of the law? Yes, it is their fault. It's not anybody else's. They were not good stewards of their property. But at the same time, they've worked and tried to do the right thing. They've come in before this board. I understand they brought the property into compliance. The lady that testified before me just said she has no problem with runoff from their property. There's some other property out there. The sheriff testified just earlier this week that our largest problem is not regulated growing, not people trying to do it the right way, but the illegal growers, the ones that are doing it under black market, the people that are using furadan and other illegal pesticides, not just in our county, but in the United States. Those are the people we need to reject. These are the people that we may need to say, we didn't have the road done correctly and it was a war shot because of a 100-year storm. Those people would be given the right to repair that road, bring it into compliance. Shouldn't a legal farm that's trying to do the right thing also be able to come into compliance and be not forgiven, but at least allowed to recoup some of their investment? They've invested thousands of dollars into this farm, into this property, into this county. I just think we should allow some of that to be examined or at least curtailed in some way. If they were trying to do the wrong thing and they hadn't corrected a darn thing, I agree, they should be booted out of the project if they're trying to do the right thing. There's been enough confusion in this project. There's been enough delays by county staff. One department in particular, I'm not going to mention it, but it has to do with law enforcement.
You have about 30 seconds.
Anyway, okay. I just say, there's been a lot of mistakes on both sides of this. I would think that the planting commission could allow some of this to have, having been corrected. Proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, can you state your name, please?
Bill Wilson, District One.
Good morning. My name is Judy Hurley. I'm District Two. And I believe that if you're going to invest in a project and put your life savings, your heart and soul into it, that you wouldn't treat it as casually as these pictures and the inspection reports have stated. You would be on top of it because you understand that if you do it wrong, and this is the way the urgency ordinance stated, if you do it wrong, you're out, period. Okay? And it was very clear. And there's been plenty of advertisement about that when the application process was going on, et cetera, et cetera. My husband and I bought our property in '79 and it took us almost 30 years to develop it. It isn't an overnight... It was not an overnight success. There was a lot of sweat equity into it. And I understand that, you know, when you pay somebody to do something, you make sure they do it right. And if you get burned one time, you're going to learn from that experience. And when you come into Calaveras County, you're on your own. You have to do things on your own. And when you put effort into it, make it show, have pride in it. There is no pride in that, in those pictures and the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak a public comment?
My name's Rich Smith and I live on a street where I do have an illegal grower. Like this lady said, I've been out there for the last probably 12 years developing five acres, putting a lot of time, effort, money, lots of money. I've gone through issues with the people that I bought the property from with the county. I actually had to finally sue the county to get the road in, which is not a county-maintained road. And there are three other residents out there. And we have a huge increase of traffic on the road. There's no road agreement. There's nothing that's going to be done to take care of the road, except it'll be on... All of this is on the backs of the people, the other residents that live out there, including myself.
Do you neighbor this property?
Pardon?
Are you a neighbor of this property?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, when I think about this, I had no idea that this was going to be something coming into our county. And I'm a businessman. I've been a businessman for many years and I've had to abide by things. I was in the printing business. I had to abide by taking care of my chemicals and disposing of everything properly. As to some of these people that are being... That you're not going to allow permits. If you do allow them to have permits, why not open up another round of permitting process? I've got a nice 5,000-square-foot building. I got a nice huge water well and I got solar. I'm probably going to take a hit on my investment in this house, this property that I've developed.
You have about 30 seconds.
And so, why not open up another round so I can apply for some permits so that I can start a grow in my shop to recoup my costs, you know, the losses that I'm going to take? That's it.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
As time goes by through this whole process, we've been trying to organize information and get information out to the public. We receive literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of calls from property owners who have operations like this either next to them or close to them. Most of the time, they're fearful about coming forward when they have to give their name. They have to be exposed on television. And so, they quietly suffer. Meanwhile, their property is being degraded. And all the property in this county is subject to that. When you have people coming in from outside the county trying to make a quick buck, they don't care what they do on the property. When I look at some of the things that are on this one, I mean, I'm not trying to pound on these people because this is common. on these people because this is, this is common with, with how little these people care about their property because it's all about the money. You know, you said that there is an, an outdoor toilet. You know, does, what does that mean? Is that a porta potty? Is that self-contained? Or is it an outhouse that spills onto the ground? There's a discharge hose from the trailer going into a pit on the ground. Kids can run through there, there's no, there's nothing compliant about this. And yet we hear the whines of, "Well, if we have another chance." Really what should happen, this is the poster boy for going into a grow, saying, "Not only are we denying your permit, we're going to strip this place clean and test for chemicals, pollutants, stream diversions, everything else, and charge you to fix this property. And you need to get out." Things like this can linger on for, for years. And who knows how it spills over to their other neighbors and people within the community. It's listed here that there's all sorts of bad wiring. Well, last year, we had four wildfires down the hill because of bad wiring or people trying to get around their meters. You know, look how many people were affected by that. I think that happened on the July fourth weekend. Power was out from Angel's Camp all the way up to Dorrington. How many millions of dollars were lost by businesses on one of the busiest summer weekends or holidays? This stuff is just tearing this county up. And it's too bad that the county government can't protect the people who live here. And when you see something as egregious as that, as this one, you know, someone's got to step in and say, "No, this isn't going to happen anymore. We're shutting this thing down." If any other reasonable or legal business person tried to do something like this and polluted the ground, polluted the environment, they would either be in jail or everything would be confiscated from them. I think it's just, just outrageous that we only learn about this after the fact and find out what was wrong because the urgency ordinance isn't preventing any of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snowden, did you already speak to this one?
No.
Okay.
I, I'm Steve Snowden. And I think that his comments were inappropriate. I don't know that there's any proof of the July fourth. I didn't hear that that was.
I'm sorry, Mr. Snowden, you did speak on this one already. You get, you only get to speak once, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought it was a different one.
Yeah, no, it's the same one. Thank you. Any further comments? We'll come back to you, you'll get a chance to rebuttal in a moment. Okay, seeing no more public comments, do you have any rebuttals you would like to? Okay, I believe, you may come up and rebuttal.
Appreciate the comments here. I wanted to address what you were saying, sir. In terms of, I, I agree with a lot of your points. Sorry. I, I do, you had some good points there. I think you could make the case for why you need to shut things down or why you need more regulation and more contact with these people or being cultivators. In our case, fortunately, this is, this is one nice thing is that, you know, chemicals and pesticides were, were not used. You know, as, as far as the land, you know, it was a disaster and they were not good stewards, obviously, but some people aren't too egregious in regard to using pesticides. And I'm glad that our neighbor Susan spoke up and made that comment about the stream and that, fortunately, that wasn't an issue for us as far as the environment goes. I have a degree in wildlife from Michigan State. Done a lot of biological work in the past. And a huge lover and very appreciative of nature. So I think that there's a way to go about this where you can be extremely eco-friendly and that is absolutely our intention. It's a tough one to say, you know, where do you draw the line between somebody getting an extra chance or, you know, trying to make a model of somebody? I don't know, it's your guys' judgment call. But I don't know, a lot of, a lot of shades of gray to this. Once again, thank you for your time. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. And do you want to read the recommendation and then we can have discussion? You want to discuss first? Okay, go ahead.
I, I have a couple of questions on the camping issue. The, the ordinance covers camping or sheltering in a vehicle or in a tent, your TPE or similar portable structure beyond the periods that are allowed. I take that to mean that if you're camping, but you're not, in a vehicle or a tent, your portable structure, that's not prohibited. Do you agree with that?
I would say disagree with that. Kind of a, where are you going with that? Kind of my girlfriend.
Well.
I think that we would consider camping to be any staying on the property outside of a legally permitted residence. So if someone is sheltering in a, a storage structure, for example, or an RV, or a trailer, or a tent, or just simply on the ground, that would be all sort of under the rubric of camping as we apply it for this ordinance. So if they're at a permitted residence that met the criteria, either through a temporary trailer permit, actual residence on the, on the property, or some other authorized structure in which someone can, can sleep in, that would not be considered camping. But we would consider someone sleeping in a shed camping for this purpose.
When I'm reading this, the phrase, "in a vehicle or in a tent, your TPE or similar portable structure," looks to me as if it modifies the words camping or sheltering. In other words, if I was out there camping with nothing on top of me, I don't see how this covers it. In this case, though, it seems to me that it's been admitted that there was camping in a tent or portable shed in excess of the fourteen days. Does that sound correct to you, Mr. Smeer?
Yes.
Okay, then I would suggest the resolution be edited to make sure that's the finding. Now, on the trailer, that's seventy-five, seventeen point nine five point one sixty-five N fourteen. It has two sentences to it. And the first one says you can have one recreational vehicle as a temporary residence on the parcel be registered as provided for in section seventeen point oh four point one three oh or chapter seventeen point nine three. The second sentence appears to only apply to areas within a quarter mile of the perimeter of the buke fire burn area. And this particular property was not within a quarter of a mile of the buke fire burn area. Is that correct?
I'm not entirely sure where the boundary line is for that. I don't believe it is, but I can't definitely say that.
Well, there's, there's nothing in the file that suggests that it was. And what, what exactly is the authority that requires a permit for this trailer?
So there are three ways to get a trailer on the property. Two have to do with the buke fire. One is if you had a dwelling burn in the buke fire, you get to live on the trailer under those provisions. The second buke fire-related one is for worker housing within one quarter mile of the buke fire area. And the third way to get, to live in a trailer on site is if you have an active building permit and you get that permit through the building department. So both the, the, if your house burnt down and for a building permit, that's done through the building department. For worker housing, that's done through the planning department.
But, but those are both, those apply when you're within a quarter of a mile of the buke fire perimeter area?
Correct. Only one that does not apply when you're directly affected by the buke fire is the building permit. If you have, if you have a building permit for a dwelling, you can live in a trailer.
And what, what section does that, what section says that?
I don't know the exact citation, but it's in Title seventeen. That provides for temporary housing while, while constructing. And I don't have copy of the code with me to look that up.
It appears to be seventeen oh four one three oh.
Okay, thank you. Now, I think there is one typo, two on the resolution.
Yeah, the first whereas clause, we need to change Mighty Farms LLC to Mighty Provisions. In the first whereas clause, we need to change Mighty Farms LLC to Mighty Provisions. That definitely needs to be changed.
Come down on the first, be it resolved. Section numbers don't match, seventeen point oh four point one eight oh versus seventeen point oh four point seven eight oh. The seven should be a one, I believe, under the, in evidence. You have point seven eight oh.
You know where I'm talking? Yeah. Very bottom of the page, Scott.
Yeah.
Last sentence.
So what should that be instead?
I think the point seven eight oh should be point one eight oh.
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Any of the commissioners have any other comments?
I'm thinking that it might be a good thing in, under finding number two in the evidence, start of the second sentence, instead of just saying it was confirmed, that we'd say in March twenty seventeen it was confirmed.
Okay.
You all good now? Can you read the recommendation, please?
All right. Planning staff recommends that you adopt resolution twenty seventeen oh four nine as amended to deny two zero one six two sixteen appeal to uphold the planning director's determination to deny twenty sixteen two sixteen.
Thank you.
So moved.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion of the planning department to carry this, five votes. Or recommendation, excuse me.
And this action is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors within fifteen calendar days.
Okay, we're going to take a fifteen-minute break and we will resume at eleven o'clock. We're going to continue with the hearing. If everybody could take their seat, please. Get the commissioners to turn their mics on. And we will proceed to item number five, appeal of Steve Snowden. Madeline, are you handling this one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good morning. Madeline Flandreau, planner two. Today I am presenting appeal two zero one seven dash zero four six from Steve Snowden. On April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, Steve Snowden attempted to submit a commercial cannabis cultivation registration application to the planning department. On that date, he spoke with the planning director and his application was immediately rejected. The application was for a cultivation site located at fourteen hundred Vineyard Terrace Court in Murphy's. APN is zero six eight zero zero three zero seven nine. And it's there just south of Skunk Ranch Road on the southeast area of Murphy's where the red arrow is. The reason for the rejection, the planning director explained in a letter to Mr. Snowden that he wrote on April twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, that explained that the reason the commercial cannabis cultivation registration application was rejected was because the submittal deadline for commercial registration expired on June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Calaveras County Code seventeen nine five one six five N one states that all commercial cannabis, commercial medical cannabis cultivation site registrants shall, shall submit a complete application for medical cannabis cultivation site registration pursuant to this chapter by June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. On May tenth, two thousand seventeen, the planning department received an appeal letter from Mr. Snowden stating that he came to the planning department during the registration period in June two thousand sixteen. And at the time, the planning staff was over next door in Department One. And as you all remember, we had a twenty-plus-page waiting list and hundreds of people that were trying to apply in the last week of June. And Mr. Snowden was under the impression that he could put his name and his phone number down on the waiting list and that he would be called for an appointment. But unfortunately, that was not what planning staff was instructed to do. And subsequently, Mr. Snowden was in an accident on June eighteenth, I believe it was, and he was unable to complete his registration. I just wanted to include an aerial image taken from August fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, of Mr. Snowden's parcel to show that he did indeed cultivate in two thousand sixteen. There we go. So sorry. And to conclude and summarize, essentially, Mr. Snowden failed to submit the registration application before the June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen deadline because Mr. Snowden's registration was submitted on April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. And per county code seventeen nine five one six five N one, deadline is clear from the urgency ordinance of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. And unfortunately, although the planning department sympathizes with Mr. Snowden, the planning director does not have the ability to waive this deadline. So I will turn that back over to you.
Thank you.
Was Mr. Snowden's wife a co-applicant in this case or just Mr. Snowden?
I don't know because I, we never received the paperwork.
On April twenty-fourth, that, that application was in his name?
Peter, do you remember the registration? Unfortunately, we didn't take in any paperwork.
I, I do not know the answer to that question. We rejected the application, so we did not receive the paperwork, so I don't have it in front of them.
And the appeal letter has, talks about a uniform gentleman making a list. Could you explain, first, what, what you were saying is the, the waiting list?
Yes.
And what, and did he have his name on that waiting list? And what was, what was, what was the purpose of that list? And how is it going to be used? And then move into the uniform gentleman on the day of?
I'm not sure what, who the uniform gentleman was. I assume it was a sheriff's deputy, but we were not, we had sheriff's deputies in the last few days, just trying to do some crowd control, maintenance of order. The last several days of our registration process, June twenty-eighth, ninth, thirtieth, something like that, we were having, we were overwhelmed with the numbers of, of registrant and applications. And we knew we could not process them all. We would have been, you know, here until midnight on Sunday, probably, trying to get through everything the last day. through everything the last day. And so the last couple of days, we did take names and phone numbers of the people that were in line with the complete application. We took a quick look at their package. Yes, you have everything here. We will call you, in fact, we took their paperwork. And we then called them, say, come back in and we will com- complete our intake process. And that lasted about another week and a half after the June thirtieth deadline.
And where were you doing this?
Next door in department one.
In department one, you were taking the papers, saying, thank you.
We, we've got it. We've got your name and number. We'll call you when we, we want you to come in so that we can complete the processing. Because it took, you know, close to an hour or more for each registration intake process. And when we had several hundred of them, we just, you know, didn't have the, the time or staff to do it all at that time.
And does, do your records contain any application from either Mr. and Mrs. Snowden?
No.
And they would if you had received them that day?
That's correct, yes.
And then what was happening? Remember, there was some mention of a, at the planning department itself, there was some other list or something? Am I?
I do not know what he's referring to.
What I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Neither do I. Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Snowden, would you like to come up?
Good morning. Again, my name's Steve Snowden.
I can interrupt you for just one moment, please. During the break, Annette had pointed out to me that she's getting names verbally on the mic, but if you would like to sign in so she spells everybody's name right, it would be great. There's a sign-in sheet right there in front of you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I don't see anybody's signature yet.
That's what she was complaining to me about.
Again, if I could address Mr. Maurer on this, there was indeed a officer out there taking names. I think it's a little discriminatory that the people that were there and the staff was understaffed, or the, the department for those, and no, they did not take paperwork and applications and that, they just took names and telephone numbers. My wife was there as I was in a coma from a motorcycle accident that states, I gave to you, that said, I shouldn't have survived. Cognizance and skills and everything else were taken away. It was a very bad accident. The vertebrae's and broke them all and the thorax, leading to more problems to my cancer through the urinary, prostate cancer I've been going through. So, and we know that, and, and we've stated that, and we're in the middle of a, a lot split anyway, but that's another issue. So we wanna stick to the issue of why we could not meet the deadline. And we had every intention, as you see, we grow. I grow for a, a lady. I've got the receipts where I sell it to them. I showed Peter that. I showed him the, probably the only ag license in California for marijuana. This is through Genesis, and I've got a registered garden through her, and I've been compliant. I just put in a great big solar system in the middle of it to, so we can keep the green thing going. And I'm in the process of getting the driveway paved, and this has been able to be done through my, my payment of cultivation. And it was the original, um, application was with my wife's name, because they, I, I'm ten years overdue and I'm, and it's metastasizing the cancers. And so I don't know if I'll even be here for that. So it's under her name, she's willing to speak and tell you the same thing I have done. And we have been growing and cultivating for years for this lady who was trying to make it from her said, but we only found out yesterday that the meeting was today, because it states right there, it says, today or soon thereafter to consider. You know, and so I, I, I just found that, because we were trying to figure that out by looking it up on the, on the internet. So there has been multiple reasons and doctor's reports of things that I've been going through that have kept me from doing it. And I thought they would call us when they took our number. I thought we, I, I thought that's what they said, and that's what my wife was under the impression. We have not been able to actually submit an application, because we've gone in special quarters with Mr. Maurer, and he said that the only, I'm, you're, I'm not taking your, your, the application, because it's strictly that, whatever that says, that it had to be done by June thirtieth, which we were unfortunately not compliant because of that, but we tried everything. We have our water part, we've got all the other things, except we weren't allowed. We've got the checks from the bank for the five thousand application fee. But we were never allowed to even present our application. So that's where I stand, and I, and I, and there's been so much to learn over this whole marijuana process, and the medical, and the illegal, black market, and how to keep people. I'm very versed in agriculture, with my cousin having gone to Davis and, and guided me through this process, because he established Indian Rock Vineyard right below us. And that, my uncles did that whole area in sixty-two. So for that reason, I'm asking for the extension, and I think there's other people that probably have a pretty good, should have a pretty good chance. Just because the overwhelming amount of applications, which were shown after the fire, anyway, that there were that many grows, I think they were understaffed and they should have been ready for this more. And, and I don't think we should be, uh, can't even think of the word, for not being ready. I think we were more ready than they were to take on this. And I do have the doctor's reports, I've got the, um, receipts. I asked Mr. Maurer, had you ever seen receipts like this from, on an application? He goes, no. I said, have you ever seen the garden number from this dispensary? No. She's working on the state level, and she's gonna be elected to the board that's making the rules for the state. And I'm very well of the, we, we're all organic, I've got test water holes like you would under a septic system for groundwater check. And I think it's very beneficial. It's helped me with my cancer to beat the odds, because I was told I should have died ten years ago, so.
Mr. Snowden, I, I have a couple of questions. First, I'm, I'm really sorry about that accident. That's an awful. But in, you, you stay in your appel, appeal letter, that you were sixteen days unconscious in the trauma intensive care unit, and that was the sixteen days after the accident?
Yeah, from, from June, June eighteenth.
But in your medical records themselves, which you've made public by submitting them, there's a notation by a doctor on six eighteen that says, you're awake and alert. And on page nine, Dr. Vaca, on June nineteenth, says, patient is awake, alert, and conversant. Do you have a comment?
Have you ever been in a hospital when a doctor makes his rounds in the morning? And, and you know, you woke, you, they wake you up and, and that's what they do, they just come by and visually tech, you know, they're overwhelmed? I didn't ever even talk to my doctors. I barely passed, and I kinda had to cheat on the cognizance test from the trauma sustained in my head. And I was released, so if I put down that I was unconscious that long, I still don't remember, excuse me, the lady that I was speaking of on the state level coming to visit me when I was home. I was on oxygen and I, I don't remember for weeks after that of people visiting me. So the consciousness there, and then there's been urinary tract damage from polio.
Mr. Snowden, can I, I'm just wanna politely remind you that this is public and will be on TV, so you don't have to go into all the details.
Okay.
If you don't want to, if you choose to, that's fine. I just wanted to remind you.
Okay, thank you. I don't mind. I just, it's just, it's, it's the truth. And so I think that the consideration should be made for us to be able to submit an application once for all. And it will, and, and I think we're more compliance, probably compliant in the garden. Marina Callaway, Dr. Orman and his wife Polly came over to see it last year, and I gave them a little education. So, you know, it's a model garden. I mean, it's a model place. And, and, and I've tried to follow the rules. I don't even know if today's a waste of time, because I, I just read that maybe there's gonna be a ban on it. And I don't know if we're all just wasting our time here. And it's gone back and forth, back and forth, and it's an annual plant. You can't plant it and have it continue to grow the next year. And so it's costing a lot of people, a lot of money, every time this decision goes back and forth, too. And so this is just one of the areas that I think there could be a learning, uh, process. And we ought to carry, go through with that for environmental concerns and everything else that has to do with agriculture.
Now, was there, was there any permit that did apply to this grow that, that you were working on last year?
Yes, we have garden number and registration, ag number and, and several.
Permit under the county ordinance?
The county hadn't had an ordinance when I did it. And last year, it was already done, and they didn't even come out till June, and ours had already started. We went through with it for the medical reasons and have the records of that. And, uh, no, so it was an illegal grow. According, it was, it was, it was out of compliance.
It sounds like a model grow, but.
But I know, but it was out of compliance, compliance because of the situations.
Did you get your seller's permit by the seventh, September seventh, or the water quality control?
Yes.
What prevented you from bringing your application to the county before your accident on the sixteenth?
My wife was in line trying to do that, and she's got.
On the thirtieth, she was, but.
No, no, not, well, I don't know what date it was. I'm not sure if you even have the record.
On the last day, right? I thought you stated she waited till the last day to come in and.
No, 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 no. I don't, I don't even know that. I was not even present. I was in Reno in the hospital, so I'm not sure. She can answer that question, because the application's actually under her name, too. I'm just up here to say that I was trying to conform with all this, and, and I wanted her to.
Okay, that's a, okay, so what prevented you, it doesn't matter what date, I guess, it's, it sounds like she was here on the last date, and that's okay. But what prevented you from waiting till the last minute to apply for the application when you could have came before?
Well, there's a saying, we have a sign in our house that says, if it wasn't for the last minute, nothing could get done. But I understand what you're saying. And, and we didn't wait till the last minute. I don't know exactly when the emergency ordinance came out. I thought it was that, that you had to get an application that wasn't, that was made up for this in May. I'm not sure.
May tenth was.
May tenth.
Tenth.
Yeah, so, 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 you know, that's six weeks.
Okay, so, then can I ask your wife what day she came here to file the application and put in her name and wait on the waiting list?
She may, she may. She's right here, and I don't, I don't have that exact date, but.
I'm Renee Snowden. I, I believe it was the thirtieth. I'm, I'm sorry, I really can't remember exactly what day, but I know it was either the last day or the day before.
Okay.
And I, I really was under the impression when the gentleman was taking, required us to put our names and phone numbers down, we would be contacted. There was, I mean, there was just this one gentleman there that was doing that. Everybody like Peter, anybody from the planning department was like bogged down. There were so many people.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah, so I just, I, I didn't know any, anything else, except to put that down and then I'd be contacted.
But they started taking applications May tenth, correct?
It was later than that. The first applications were probably submitted around maybe May twentieth, twenty-fifth, something like that. And then they were trickling in during the first couple of weeks of June, and then it really built up towards the end.
Okay, thank you. So you did sign your, you did sign up to get a returned phone call for an appointment?
Yeah.
Did you not receive any phone calls? Were you in Reno?
I didn't receive any phone calls. I was back and forth to Reno quite a bit. It was just a little tough to deal with stuff, didn't. So I just, it didn't really faze me that I wasn't getting a phone call back from you guys. I just, I wasn't ready to deal with the whole lot at all, so.
Do we have the list when people originally came in on the thirtieth and signed up for calling them back and making appointments?
Yes, I believe we have that in our office.
Do we have proof that she's on that list and that she physically came here and signed up?
I have not looked at that list to see.
Pardon me?
I have not looked at that list to see.
I think.
I was told that there was no list, that they'd never had an officer out there.
God said that one time.
And I went to their front desk and asked and told them that, our dilemma. And, you know, it wasn't just the accident, I mean, I ended up with E. coli and a lot of stuff that just continued to continue on. And my wife was really under duress during that.
I'm sure. My question to you is, is if you were able to apply for your seller's permit by September seventh, two thousand sixteen, and your water board permit, how come you never brought in an application to the county till April?
We tried to, and Peter said there's a deadline.
Okay, so you came in when, July, Ju-, August?
August, I believe, or whenever. We've, we've, we have been listening.
Who brought it in?
We've been listening to the news as far as the board, county's decision on this whole thing, and it's gone so many different ways. And they just, you know, it, it's very confusing.
Who brought it, who brought it in in August? Was it?
I was, I did. And I, and, and, and as a matter of fact, that's the day we had the meeting, and my wife was behind us because I forgot to bring the money, and she went to the bank and made the cashier's checks, but we didn't know if they accepted cash, so she, I sent her to the bank. But we had the cash anytime we were ready to submit that, except we're not able to. We, I think we were compliant with pretty much everything except the, um.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure.
John, you gotta have a, and I, when I had business to get permits to do roofing and such, she had to have a business.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just defer over here for one second, because, Peter, do you remember what day they came to the counter after the June thirtieth date?
I do not remember the date, but I thought it was sometime this spring, in March or early April.
What instituted?
I don't remember a meeting in August.
What instituted a denial letter? Did they ask for you to deny accepting of their application? Since you don't have one on file, what generated that letter?
They asked to submit the application sometime.
April twenty fourth.
April twenty fourth, or just before then. And I, that precipitated the letter, saying I couldn't accept it.
Okay, so then.
The first time I remember having any conversation about cannabis cultivation on this site was in late March or early April.
My question to you, were you with Mr. Snowden when he came to turn that application in in August, like you said?
No, I wasn't with him.
I, she was in the parking lot outside, ready to come in with the checks, and I said, they are denying, and they wouldn't even take the application. Or, and I had.
That was in.
That was in.
That was in April.
April, I'm sorry. Yeah, is that what we're speaking about?
Okay, so if you were busy applying for permits through the state with your.
No, no, we didn't apply for them. What I did is I found, I've been selling to dispensaries.
I'm talking about your water and seller's permit.
Yeah, that was, that was done.
If you did that before the September seventh date, but you didn't come in until April to submit an application over the counter, that really confuses me. It seems to me that you would have come in to turn in your application before going through. Do you have those seller's permits with you, showing the date before September?
I believe I do, yes. I do have that, and, and the water board.
And they're both dated pre-September seventh?
Yeah.
Do you have them with you today?
Yes, I do.
Can we see a copy of that by chance?
Sure. I think the, honestly, the reason that I didn't follow through with anything after he had gotten home is because he had several issues after we got home.
Sure.
And he's had to go back in to use CSF and have surgery. And he's had to go back in to use CSF and have surgery a couple of different times, so I've just not-
But you followed through with the water and seller's permit according to what you're telling us?
Prior to this, all prior to the accident.
I think she had that prior to the June 30th, I believe.
Yeah.
She was ready to submit that with the application.
And you paid the fees and you've gotten a letter of acceptance from them, or they denied you because you didn't have an application with the county?
No, I've got a letter of, okay, from the board and-
Can we see a copy of that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, and, Mr. Mallor, I don't know that if you remember, but I did ask a question as, to our lot split, which, what did it, was it affected, was the decision and the, uh, changes that went through that about the biol- and we do have a biological resource now, because we had to do that. But, but I, I did say, I asked the question, I said, are we having, is this so problematic because we're growing marijuana? And, and you said, no, no, not having to do with that. But, but I did talk to you about that in, in that respect, you know, and I do remember that and that, and that was well, well into it, because I, I tell you what, between the damage I did to my mind, I guess, or something, and looking at this, and I was following it really, really close. I was, ours is called Murphy's Farms, P-H-A-R-M-S, got the signs, had everything posted legitimately last year that we had. And we just couldn't get the permit because of the, he said, there's no exceptions for that. And so, I, I, then he said, just do an appeal. And, and our power was out, so it was handwritten because of our septu- I mean, our installation of our solar power. So we had no way to use the computer or type it, so that's why it's handwritten. And we do have the rest.
Can you hand that over to Commissioner Worcester, and he'll pass it down for all of us to look at? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just clarify a little bit about the, the list and the name taking. So, during the last couple of days, the sheriff's office was making a list of names and phone numbers, because of, people were lined up, you know, several hours deep. And then they were being called back to say, okay, you're ready to submit your paperwork now, so they could go away, take care of other business and come back. But they had to submit their paperwork to us. We then had a list of the people that submitted the paperwork and called them back to, to take in the actual submittal based on the phone number on their application. So there were sort of two lists going on. One that was sort of organizing, just, you know, the people in line at that point in time. You can go away for a couple of hours, we'll call you as your name comes up, so you can come back and then submit your paperwork. And then, at the last part, we made a separate list of the names of people that, you know, were there in line, you know, as of the deadline on, on May 30th or June 30th, and, but we couldn't process their paperwork. And so that was, and then we, you know, followed up with them the following week.
But you did collect the paperwork that day?
But we did collect the paperwork that day.
And you have nothing on file with her paperwork?
Well, I've asked staff to bring over that list, so I can look at it and see if it's on the, the name was on the list.
Do we still have the list that the sheriff was compiling? Because that's the one that they-
I don't think so, but I don't know.
We're looking to see if we scanned it in.
Okay.
But it was just a placeholder list.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was told that they, they, they'd never had that list at first when I went up there, and that was prior to August, or prior to April. And, um, because my, when I was able to, my wife said she did that, and I thought, well, where's, where's the phone call? And we didn't, and they did not take paperwork that day. They did not. All right, because we had our, this whole file, and I think that's dated in time for the June 30th, but the other stuff.
The list that was placeholding people in their, when they came in, they would get their spot back. It was to hold their place in line. We weren't calling people off of that list. It was their responsibility to come back and to be called once their name came up on that list.
Am I the first one that didn't get my name in there on June 30th that's come for an appeal? Am I the very first one that's had to move to?
I have not. I've been here since the beginning of the appeals, and I have not seen anybody come through that didn't get their call back.
Okay, well, I'm just coming here to be, to be compliant. Those people are probably wrong, I would assume. You know, because they tried, they tried, and it's very defeating when you try that hard and you have that much invested in it to not be able to do it. And that is not, was not our problem, because we were under oath there to do that prior to June 30th. And there were a line, there were lines, and we, I mean, we have 10 friends that were in line that, that say the same thing. I know people that were in line that didn't get it that are wrong, anyway. Because, that we hear things like the police department are understaffed by three people. They need more money. This will generate the money. I've seen Colorado, how it works well when they have money. Everybody knows if you have money, things work.
How many years have you been growing?
Is this off the record?
Four. I, I'm doing that because the urgency ordinance stated you had to be growing before that timeline, so-
It's like four or five.
Yeah, you, you probably have a lot of pictures.
Four or five of them.
Probably that they've taken.
Yeah.
So, yes, and, and we've had the property since the early 90s, we went through the whole process of the general plan amendment and zoning, 20s to 5s and all that. So we, and since, so we've been around a while, and, you know, it, it hasn't been hidden. And, and Mr. Smith, Rich Smith, that came up and spoke, is that one person that's on our street that said there's an illegal growth there? And that it is illegal because it's noncompliant, because we weren't able to comply.
I'm not quite sure where we left the August situation.
It was April.
It was April. There, there was no August. Okay.
There is no, there hasn't been an August.
So if I'm understanding, from your point of view, the sheriff was taking a list that included asking you for your phone number. You assumed that was a, we're too crammed to process everybody today, we'll give you a call when it's not, well, it would be your wife's understanding.
Well, that was the only thing it was.
Yeah.
Except I understood that.
But that, yeah, that, that was your understanding at the time?
Yeah, it was, because there were so many people in the courtroom and seated throughout in the, in the chairs itself and in the hall.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it was definitely overwhelming. It's scary.
If I, if I understand the planning department's position, that list was just, you're holding your, it's like picking a number when you're walking into a drugstore.
And with that many people around.
And that, was there any purpose to the phone number on that list?
We were not asking anybody to put their phone number down on that waiting list.
On that particular list, there wasn't a phone number?
Correct, yes.
But there were two lists being taken that day, right?
Right. I'm talking, right now, I'm talking about the sheriff's list.
So, it wasn't the sheriff's list, it was the planning department's list. The sheriff, there was a deputy in Department 1 to help us, because there were so many people that showed up. And the list had been going on for, let's see, we were in Department 1 for at least a week, the final week of registration. On June 30th, that was the day that we stopped sitting down with applicants, and we were just taking in their application. We were not taking in fees. We just said, please hand us your application, make sure that your contact information, that there is a phone number on there, because we're going to call you to set up an appointment in July. So that list that we're talking about is what we generated from these applications. It was a call log, essentially.
But the, the, the list that the sheriff's deputy was making was at the request of the planning department, and it was just a list of names, as you recall?
Yes.
And you, have you seen that list?
Not recently.
No, but I mean, can you verify there weren't phone numbers on that list?
I never saw any phone numbers, but there were 20-plus pages, so it's very possible that some people did put down their phone numbers, but I didn't review every page.
Thank you.
I understand it was very confusing. We were extremely overwhelmed. There were hundreds of people, and it wasn't very clear. We were trying to do our best to explain to people that there was a waiting list, that your name was going to be called, that we could come in, take your paperwork and your fee to get you registered. But on June 30th, things changed, because there were still so many people waiting.
Mrs. Snowden, on June 30th or June 29th, you brought in the paperwork to start this process, correct?
Yes.
And you had the papers you've just shown us, the water quality form and this other form. Did you also have the application filled out at that point?
Yes. And, and I had, I had cash at that time, but-
Do you still have that application?
Uh, yes, I think I do in here.
I'd like to see it if you have it with you.
Okay. When I asked the, the gentleman, you know, when we were signing that paper, I said, well, because I was partway down on this one page, and I asked him, what number? I says like, what number am I? And he said, well, you must be probably around 200 now. So, if it was a matter of, you know, taking my name to be called, I mean, number 200, I don't think I would have made it in that day, for sure. But, because there were way too many people on the list to, to like call back.
Presumably, you would have the actual original of the application. And do you recall, was there anything else that you gave them, or that you had prepared to give to them at that point?
Excuse me, you better get back by the microphone.
There was.
You were gonna look for the seller's permit.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Well, I need that.
I don't know, she's very old.
I see this is, this is all, this is the water board. Maybe I have it in a different folder. I do know I have one in here somewhere. And I can't believe I don't have it in the right folder. Maybe I don't have a copy of my seller's. I, I know I have one, and I know I had it in my application, so I just, I don't see it right at the moment, I'm sorry.
I, I have, I do have a lot of invoices and receipts on sales for medical, and then what they do, it's a non, it's a, well, they co-op or non-profit, and they call it contribution, and then they pay you for your paper and expenses, and how they work that. And you have all that, and, um, as soon as they figure out, they're all, they're all the same.
I keep hitting that, I keep hitting that. I gave it to him.
Oh.
The seller's permit shows a date of July 1st. Your, your registration application form had May 27th as Renee Snowden's signature date.
Yeah.
So, would May 27th have been, you told us the end of June was the date you went in. So had you filled out the registration form the month previous?
I had started filling out everything, yeah.
Okay. And why was the seller's permit not dated until July 1st?
I, I can't tell you for sure.
Well, it wasn't due in the urgency ordinance until September 7th.
Right.
And a lot of people didn't apply until later, because they kept having to come up with a lot of money to get through those processes. Are there any further questions of the appellant here?
I just want to make clear, Mrs. Snowden, you did give your name and your phone number when you were at the counter or at the courthouse?
Yeah.
And are you fairly sure that that was written down?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And this was done by a, a person in uniform?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I, I, I assumed it was like a security guard that, like they usually have in the courtroom, but, you know, I just know it was a uniformed gentleman. And he was towards the back of the room and, and had the paper and pencil, and we were just-
And between that time and March or April of this year, did you or your husband call the planning department and try to check up on why nobody had called you?
Yes, and that's when Scott was on, we talked to Scott, and he really, he denied that there was a list.
He said they never had anybody taking theirs.
When did you make that contact?
It, it was before-
It's before planting season. It was probably January, February. Because I, I said, that, after I learned about this, I said, don't we get to turn in our application?
I, I'm not sure what, when it was.
Because that's what the understanding, or maybe it was Gina, I, I'm not sure, because we've been working with-
No, it was, it was Scott that was on the phone.
And, and, because we've been working with the planning, but-
Yeah, because Scott's the one that we're working with with the property split, so I recognized his name, Scott Spear.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the commissioners? Okay, you can have a seat, and we'll take public comment now. Thank you.
Hi, Carl Snowden. You know, when somebody's doing something right, they're operating in good faith, they have done everything exemplary. If I had neighbors like this that were growing marijuana, you would never have seen me. Peter would never have met me. So, there's a time for benefit of the doubt, and I think this is it. That's what you're gonna have to do. You know, we, we like to say, well, the rules are the rules. We wrote this down. Well, you have an appeals process to look at those rules and say, well, maybe it doesn't quite apply in this case. We've done it before. We had in Troy, up in, up in West Point, where he had a, his water board application, or I'm not sure, the, water board letter, and he had it, and it was, it was marked as, as being- as, uh, as being completed and mailed to him before, uh, September 7th. And you folks said, okay, this is a good grower. For no other reason, that he was a good grower and that he had operated in good faith. You gave him that. In this case, where I think you guys are gonna have to do it too, and I don't see any other choice, really.
Thank you.
Bill Wilson, District One. Let me write my name down. Um, I have a couple of points. Number one, we were concerned with them not getting paperwork done by the 7th. I believe one of the other regulations of that September 7th deadline was a business license issued by the County of Calaveras. I don't believe that the County of Calaveras issued one business license to any individual in this program before September 7th. Um, number two, the UO was basically a stopgap measure, if I'm not mistaken. We were trying to inhibit people from doing a green rush in this county. Mr. Snowden's wife, obviously, lived here for many years, obviously grown marijuana under Prop 215 and 420, which all of us were doing, that tried to apply. Why did they wait for the last minute, like a lot of people did? We were scared to death of just what happened. The county reversing its attitude toward registered, re-regulated cannabis, the public display of our names, addresses, property, anybody could see on Google Earth where we were after that public, uh, release of information. So, yeah, a lot of people didn't believe things were gonna go this way. They were scared. So they didn't come in. In this situation, obviously his accident, obviously her confusion at the board of, or at the final days of registration, along with many other people. I happen to be one of the people that were here helping people, trying to get their packages together to be presented to the Planning Commission, or Planning Department, excuse me. Um, and it was total, almost chaos here. The planning department, staff, everybody was overwhelmed. We were overwhelmed and we were volunteers. And we had people lined out the door, waiting to get their applications looked at and their plot plan examined to see if they had what planning and county would require of them in their permit process. The permit process wasn't perfect, it isn't perfect, it still isn't perfect. We still need to work on that. We still need to work on a lot of things. But if we're trying to inhibit out-of-county illegal growing, these people that have been growing here for years seem to be a good candidate for possible exemption to some of that, and maybe a little bending of the rules. Not that anybody around really wants the rules bended. We do try to adhere to those, and we have those that have made it through the process. Very few, more have been rejected than have been approved at this point. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Uh, there's two parts to, to my comments. It covered two different areas. One, kind of with the county, and one with potential registrants. Uh, when you have staff that only has administrative authority, trying to alter or interpret code that has been handled by the statutory authority in the county, things like this can start happening. This is not the first time that I've gone through packets of appeals coming to you and to the Board of Supervisors, where we've seen that application days were well after June 30th. Um, in this particular case, it's almost a year after June 30th. Uh, I presume the growing has continued, that there wasn't any, uh, connection between them not having an application submitted and their growing continuing. So things like this can kind of pop up, and I don't know how you resolve it all, but I think if you stick with what the ordinance says, first of all, we don't get into these unintended consequences of situations that can pop up, and then it becomes, you know, a real furball that someone's gotta unravel all this stuff and it falls to you. And I presume that if it's not satisfactorily resolved, it will go on to the Board of Supervisor and the, and the system continues to get clogged up with applications or discussions that never should have taken place. They should have just been excused, and that's it. We don't take your application. Uh, I can't remember the tax collector giving me a break if I went to pay my property taxes and the line was a little too long, and I went back the day following the deadline. There's a penalty. You don't, you don't get any slack on that. That's the way the statute's written. That's the way the law is written. When you follow it, you pretty much stay out of trouble. When you don't, I don't care which side doesn't follow it, problems can arise. I think this is a good example. And in going forward, I would, I would hope that staff makes decisions and does things that's within their authority, not above their authority. That's for the Board of Supervisors to handle. They have the statutory, uh, authority. So as long as everyone fulfills their roles and stays within the confines of their authority, you know, we have some chance of maybe getting through this. Uh, if we don't, then it's just gonna be more and more chaos piled on, and we'll, we'll never get it straightened out. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, wait a minute, hold on, guys. Okay, is there any further public comment? No? Okay. Um, do you have any rebuttal, Madeline?
No, I do not.
What do we know about, anything come up about the existence of the lists and whether their names were on the first, the placeholder list?
Certainly not have a copy of that placeholder list. We have a copy of the spreadsheet that we created from the applications that we took in but did not process until the following week. Um, and, um, the name was not on that list. We didn't, do not, uh, they did not submit the paperwork, which they, you know, they said they didn't submit the paperwork because they thought they were gonna be called by, by someone to do so. So, um, but we do not have that list that would show that they were on, on that. I, I don't have any doubt that they, you know, they did sign up for that and made an assumption that they were going to be called at some point in time in the future.
And I'm, the list that was the handwritten list that the deputy that was in attendance that day assisting, that's a whole separate list from yours?
Yes.
And I guess that concerns me because if, I mean, I could see where she would be a little bit distraught with her husband in one place, her in another with what was going on in their family. Um, is there a way to find out if that list really exists out there somewhere? We went to lunch for an hour.
I don't even know where we would look. I suppose we could contact, I don't know, you know, who it was that was maintaining control at that time, you know, which deputy was assigned to that. Uh, if it was just a volunteer, it may not have been an actual sworn deputy. Um, and I don't know if they saved those lists.
The deputy wasn't assigned to keep track of the list. He was only here to keep everybody under control. He wasn't signing people in. People signed their own names in. So whether they put their phone number on that and the assumption that they were gonna get called back, I don't know. But we weren't having them sign in to be called back for an appointment. It was just to keep their place in line.
It wasn't the deputy that was...
No, he was just here to keep...
Who was holding that list?
The list wasn't being held, it was on a hook, on a table. So when people came in, they were signing up. They, they were asked to come to the list and put their name down. And when we got to their name, the next planner would call them up.
Who, who was asked, who was telling them to come and sign up?
I think as they walked in, either we were telling them or the deputy said, put your name on the list, you'll be called as soon as we get to your name. Not by phone call, but we'd call your name.
Just to make it clear, you know, there's been a little bit of contradictory information from staff on this because it was pretty chaotic at that point in time. I would have to say that Annette probably has the best recollection of what was going on. She was really sort of trying to spearhead things. Um, and so I had, you know, I was busy working on the general plan. I was not directly involved, other than coming by to check to see, you know, how things were going on occasion. So I would trust Annette's recollection best of what was happening, although, you know, Madeline was, you know, there as well, um, and, you know, directly involved in the intake. We had almost our entire staff at that point in time, you know, working on the intake of those applications. So there was a list, people would sign up, they'd, you know, walk in, they will, you know, we'll call your name when you're, when we're ready to take you. Um, and it was several pages long, uh, and I think someone said, you know, there were number 200 on the list. Um, and, and it wasn't until they actually came in with their application that we took the paperwork and said, we will call you. Um, and what's interesting with this list is, you know, a number of these people, you know, we left a voicemail message, uh, there was no telephone number. I mean, we weren't able to contact some of these people that tried to submit because they didn't give us the information necessary to even get back to them. Uh, but that's really not pertinent to this discussion, it's just, that's how crazy it was at that point in time.
I know I've already talked, I just want to add, could I add one comment that you seem to be talking about? And that is that as people would come in the doors over here where we were, the volunteers that were helping with packets, we did tell people that there was a list to sign up down there, that it was getting chaotic, and that I don't remember telling them that they would be called back, but there was a list down there to get your name on the list. That's all I wanted to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking to see status. Okay. If there is no further comments from the commissioners...
Well, yes, there is.
There is? Well, let's hear it.
Okay, the urgency ordinance says a couple different things about registration. One part, 17.95.165A, says the registration of a medical cannabis cultivation site must be completed by June 30, 2016. When you go to subpart N, one, it says, "All commercial medical cannabis cultivation site registrants shall submit a complete application for medical cannabis cultivation site registration pursuant to this chapter by June 30th." It appears that there was an attempt to submit it by June 30th, and the date on it is like May 27th. It was obviously filled out in advance of June 30th. The water board NOI is May 29th, so they had that done before June 30th. I think there's a lot of confusion here about who had what lists and what was supposed to be on them, but their version is pretty consistent, that they, they were there, there was a list taken, it had their name, and their phone number was written down. What's a little troubling, but perhaps understandable, is why the delay from all the way from June 30th to maybe January or February to inquire about this? And perhaps explainable by Mr. Snowden's medical condition and issues. So, at this point, I'm inclined to say that they, they did actually submit their application by June 30th, as N. 1 requires. And it was obviously impossible to have them completed under A. of that subsection by June 30th. It could not be done for everybody. So I'm inclined to grant this appeal.
And I, uh, I came in quite skeptical from reading the papers. Um, and I concur with Commissioner Wooster that, that I believe your version of the events, um, I accept it fully. I don't think the, the planning director disputes your version. Uh, and, um, given the turmoil of that day, um, or those last couple of days, I, I agree with Commissioner Wooster that we should treat this application as having been submitted. That does not mean that the planning commission, uh, planning department would be barred from looking at what you did last year and if, whether it was in conformance with the ordinance. Um, from what you've said, it, it is, but this, if, if the commission were to treat the application as having been submitted, um, that does not mean you're off the hook for scrutiny as to your actual operations. Uh, if, if everything else is conforming with the ordinance, the way you are operating the farm, uh, and getting your various, uh, licenses and this sort of thing, which are not at issue right now, um, well, then there should be no problem. But if the department finds that you are, you were in violation, you may well be back here with another denial of your application. Um, I'm just, that's, that's my own personal point of view, it's not what the commission has decided, right?
See, I still have a problem with this because even on her, signed application, she signed the application on 5/27. The application final date to get it in was June 30th. She had plenty of time. She even had time before the date of his accident to turn it in and had proved that she had already done most of the work. So she voluntarily waited till the last day, even though she had most of the stuff done. So I am still with, she had the time to do it before the accident, she didn't have to wait till the last day, she chose to wait till the last day. So that application was signed 5/27, she had time to turn it in. She did not, she could have turned it in and avoided the whole last day thing, avoided the whole last week thing. She already had it signed. She already had it done on the 27th of May, not June, of May.
Should she have anticipated what actually happened the last week?
Mm-hmm.
I am very sympathetic with what Mr. Snowden went through. It really sounds like quite a, quite a lousy time in your life, but you're at least looking pretty healthy right now. So something's okay. The problem I have with the case is not, is not so much the list. Even if that list were there, uh, even if you were promised a call back, whatever, nothing happened after June 30th until, at the very earliest, January or February or perhaps even later. Why, why the six months delay? I don't, I don't, I can't wrap myself around that. I don't understand that. If Mrs. Snowden had the ability to, to go down on the 29th or the 30th, certainly she had the ability at some point in there to follow up and find out what's going on. And that, that lack of any contact up until 2017, to me, pulls away, I don't think I have the discretion to determine that it was an actual submission of the application.
I'm gonna, Mr. Snowden, I have to ask you just to sit down for just a minute.
On procedural point, though, I think if this gets up to the Board of Supervisors, they need the, the evidence that has been passed down today. The, the water board forms and the, whatever it was that they've given us today should be added to the...
Yes, I intend to get that.
My memory is failing me, but I have a question because Mr. Snowden was before this planning commission on something else. Was it a split on his parcel? And was he in and out of the planning commission all last year dealing with the parcel split?
He does have a partial map application pending with the department. Uh, I don't believe it's been before the commission yet. I mean, with the map application hasn't, we also had a... it's been before the commission yet. I mean, the map application hasn't, we also had a request because the original application was not in compliance with the board policy regarding land divisions under the general plan processing, where subdivisions of more than two parcels need to have public water or sewer. That went before the board, but I don't believe it was before.
December of '14.
Yeah, that was, that was two and a half years ago.
Okay, so it was pre all of this. You were in and out of the planning commission dealing with that all this year. That was my question. The particulars of the case don't matter to me. It was just, were they in and out dealing with that? And they had every opportunity to submit at that point. Okay. I'm struggling with this one. Originally, when I was asking about the September 7th date deadlines, it was because I thought, okay, if you had the ability to apply for those and try and follow the urgency ordinance guidelines, then you should have been submitting the application and calling the planning department pre that time. But when I looked at the dates of the applications that you got, they were before the accident. So you weren't processing paperwork after the accident. You were complying with the urgency ordinance long before you even submitted your application. So it sounded like you really had things in order and ready to roll. But I really struggle with waiting until March to come in. And it's not that I don't have sympathy for this situation because it's horrible. I'm sorry your family has had to go through that. My issue is that if we grant an application with follow-up that came through from June 30th all the way into March of 2017, how many other applicants are going to come before us and have a story for us that we have to now not follow the urgency ordinance guidelines? That is troublesome for me. I, I have been very consistent ruling on the urgency ordinance, ruling on all of the rules in this urgency ordinance, not stepping outside of those guidelines because I fear, I have sat here through almost 100 appeals now, that I give one person a waiver based on sympathy and 50 people I've denied are going to come and sue the county. So for me, I have to hold my heart dear to black and white in the urgency ordinance. And I have no proof anybody was here on June 30th. The name is not on the list. Mr. Wilson spoke publicly and said he was here volunteering, and he guided people as they came through, and it was chaotic. But he would say, get your name on that table, get your name on that list. I don't see the name on the list. I don't know that I would have been here on June 30th knowing my husband was in the condition he was in. So, I mean, I compliment you if you went through those efforts, but I need more proof of that. For me, the most troublesome part is not following up until March. You were capable to make the grow happen and harvest the grow this year. I see that as capable of coming to the county and getting to that counter and saying, here's what happened to us. I was on the list. So I, I struggle, and I'm gonna probably lean towards upholding the planning department's denial.
I have just one clarification. It's, the list that they did not get on was the one that was formally being taken by the planning department when the planning department accepted or received the papers. The list that they, and, and I, I believe, and I believe they satisfied a burden of proof of they came in, they heard, oh, go up to the, the counter and sign in on that list. I believe that. And I, I believe, there's no proof that they didn't because that list does not exist, as far as we know anymore. Didn't survive the process. So we don't have a list with our name on it, but I think they've satisfied their burden of proof that their name was on that list. There was just a misunderstanding on their part that they thought that list was one where you put your phone number down and somebody was going to call you, whereas it was actually just a placeholder list.
Okay, but then you continue to grow and harvest, and you don't come to the county until the next grow season starts?
No, that's, that's.
That's where.
That's another aspect.
It is another aspect. And I mean, and that's where, I mean, I mean, I, and I understand what you're saying. And I made every effort to say, show me documentation, show me documentation. And the burden of proof is not on us. The burden of proof is for her to bring me something proving to me she was here on June 30th. I don't have that before me.
We have their, their statements. And if we believe them, then they have satisfied the burden.
I can't because we closed the hearing. I'm sorry.
Can I just answer a question?
It.
As you're, you're wondering, that I would bring in the proof that I was in personally involved.
I'm sorry. I cannot have you talk from a chair in.
I'm sorry. I have multiple, multiple health issues and operations that kept me and her driving me there throughout the whole period. I did go there. We've had a real problem with our land split, and we did go there. And I did mention that. And this room, according to my wife, was packed so full, seats.
Okay, this is, this is testimony, this is testimony we've, we've already heard from you. But don't leave the mic because I have one specific question for you. Earlier in this hearing, you said you went to the county in August, over the counter, and were denied at that time. They wouldn't take your paperwork. And then there was conversation later that said you went maybe January or February, but you definitely went in March.
I went and talked to Peter himself, Mr. Maurer himself, that day.
Which day?
I, are we talking about this year?
I'm talking about, when is the first time you said, I never got a call back, and went to the counter to try and submit the application?
I talked to Scott. And that was when I was waiting for Mr. Maurer. He was out. He came in the door, and he spoke with me and said, let's make a date to talk about this. Let's, you come in and we'll talk about this, and I'll explain it to you.
Was that in January or February?
In January and February, I was under the care of, of doctors and whatever. I, and I had started this whole process, but my wife had to.
Specifically, my question is, when is the first time, what month? I don't need a specific day. What is the first time you walked into the county and said, I need to turn in my paperwork because I never got a call back? And actually, you're not even on the application. It's filled out in just her name, so she physically needed to be a part of that process. Were you here and turned in the application?
I was having, I guess.
Okay, because you were in the car getting money. I recall your, that's correct. I recall you saying that.
And.
And that was in March? Okay.
And all I'm saying is if there was another list here, those who are here, like this other gentleman, will probably tell you that it was so packed that you couldn't even get to that list.
I understand. And, and I have to tell you, I do understand that, but, but I, I do need to stop the talking now because we did close the hearing, but I did want to ask you that specific question. And I, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to you guys. I really am.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you may.
How many times did the ordinance change back and forth, whether there was going to be a ban, or how it was going to be handled, and this, during that time, too? Because, like he said, we were kind of scared. We're worried. We're trying to figure.
At any time period during that entire process, the urgency ordinance has stayed in place. Nothing changed on the urgency ordinance, and it was never removed. It was continued and extended. And that's what we're here to today, is the urgency ordinance. I'm not here based on what the supervisors are doing with a ban or regulation. I'm here to enforce the urgency ordinance, and that is where your appeals stands. So I'm in it. I thank you very much.
One more thought. As, just looking at the realities of the situation, if I were in their shoes last fall with a harvest about to come in, and I knew I tried to make an application, would I, at that point, be rattling the cage and say, hey, here I am, maybe I'm illegal. I tried to do an application. It's, it, I, I can understand a delay until after the harvest.
I can too, except for over 1,700 people came in and said, hey, I've been growing, and stepped up to the line. And that's been the issue. So I, I'm, yeah, you have some questions. Your brain is working hard in overtime over there.
Well, I, I understand the concern about this commission granting a waiver of a requirement. I, I don't think this commission has the authority to do that. But I don't think that granting this appeal is granting a waiver. I think to grant this appeal, the commission needs to find that they satisfied the ordinance by submitting a complete application by June 30th. That's what the ordinance requires. And I think they have carried their burden of proving that through their appeal letter and through their statements before this commission. And given the dates on the documents, I think it's credible. So I think they have demonstrated compliance. I do understand the concern, and it troubles me too, why the delay all the time from June 30th until March, say, of this year? I'm not convinced that actually logically that's all that relevant. If they submitted it, they complied. Common sense would say they should have followed up. Yes, they didn't.
Except it never got submitted. Except for the urgency ordinance clearly states that the application had to be submitted by June 30th. She signed her name to a piece of paper. She did not submit her application. That's where I'm finding a, a line that we have to be careful crossing.
And I fully agree with that. And I, I wouldn't want this to be applied to the submission of papers to the Water Quality Control Board and then say, whoops, gee, you meant to do it. I think there are very special circumstances here that, that merit are considering this application to have been submitted to the, to the county.
I mean, maybe the issue is, what, what does the word submit mean? And then three, to me, it means they show up, they have a completed application, they try to hand it in, they can't do it at that point because there's too many people ahead of them. There was nothing else they could do on June 30 but what they did. And to me, that qualifies as submission if you believe what they say. And I do.
I know this is going to sound rude, and I'm not trying to talk any of you out of your vote. I'm just gonna make this statement. What you just said makes total sense to me. And I, I believe she came here and signed something, but the process wasn't followed through according to the urgency ordinance with submitting the application. And I know that there was a lot of trauma in their life with it that day. But there was a point behind what I was gonna say, and I think I just lost it. I'm sorry. When, when you say that you consider that to be submittal, you've been here with me through all these appeals, Commissioner Wooster. How many appeals have we seen where they said, I never got my call back? I was there. I signed a piece of paper, and I didn't get my call back. Even if they went two months later, how many appeals have we seen like that? This is a tough one for me. I mean, because if they signed, if there was confusion and they signed a piece of paper over here, but I, I would think we would have seen more of that happening, and we haven't. So I think that people and the volunteers were saying, go over there, make sure you get your name on that list, and turn your application in. Without turning your application in, you haven't submitted anything. I'm just, I, I, I'm done. I don't, I don't want to influence any of you with your votes. I just know that I, I have to stay firm on my vote with what I have voted on in the past. And by changing that, I would be not standing on my ground like I have. And they do, they are not dead here. They can appeal this to the supervisors, and the supervisors can overrule my decision. So anyway, is there any further questions or any input?
I guess I would, I would ask the planning director if anything has changed the planning department's position.
Well, our recommendation was based on the position I have, that, that I didn't have the authority to accept a late registration. I viewed it as late registration. I understand Mr. Wooster's interpretation of the code, that, you know, the attempt to submit qualifies that. And I think that's really up to you as commission to determine whether or not you believe that they satisfied the provisions of the ordinance. I don't think there are any provisions for, you know, sort of a sympathy action of, gee, it's too bad, you know, these things happened. Yeah, there just, it simply isn't one of those. So it's whether or not you believe that the, you know, attempt to submit satisfied the requirements of the, of the code. Thank you.
I could ask. Close the hearing. Can I open it back up to ask Mrs. Snowden a question?
You're the chair. You can do that.
Mrs. Snowden, can I have you come to the mic for a moment, please? I don't want to get into personal questions, but if you could prove to me you were in Calaveras County on June 30th, it would definitely sway my decision. Do you have a gas receipts from June 30th? Do you have hotel receipts showing that you were there but not there on June 30th? Is there anything to show me that you were not by his side on June 30th and you were here in this county? Now, I know you wouldn't have them on you. I'm asking if you could show proof.
I can check to see what I have because I know I have what you say. I mean, I have gas receipts and I have different things. I just don't know if I have them, you know, for what days. I can check. I don't know for sure.
Okay.
Maybe even a phone record. I just don't know because.
How long were you home? Did you just come home overnight to submit the application? Or were you here for several days? Because I was looking to see when he was, the admission and when he was released, because I was trying to tie all that together. But it seems to me that right around that time period, he was in serious condition. And I'm just struggling with that June 30th date, looking at the medical records.
Yeah, like from the 18th, it wasn't until like July 4th that he really came out of the, the trauma coma. But I, I'm not sure. I just.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, I have one.
Okay, good.
Let's go back to this list thing. And, and your position, your claim is that you put your name and phone number down on this list.
Yes.
Did anyone actually tell you that the planning department was going to call you back? Or did you just assume that?
No. What he said was, and there were some other people there, too, that were going to sign the list, is that you will be contacted when your name comes up, and, you know, that, that's when you'll be able to bring everything and submit it, you know?
Who was he? He said that?
He? Well, he was that uniformed gentleman, yeah.
You didn't talk to anyone else from planning department?
No, they were busy. They were with people.
And did this piece of paper have any instructions on it?
No, it just had two separate lines, name and phone number. That was it. No, it just had two separate lines, name and phone number, that was it.
And you understood you will be contacted as you will be called?
Yeah.
Whereas he might have, he might have meant, your name will be called.
Yeah, yeah.
Misunderstanding.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, I can have the planning department read the recommendation. Are you all ready for that?
Okay. The planning department recommends the planning commission pass a motion to adopt resolution 2017-045, denying appeal 2017-046, upholding the planning director's determination to reject the commercial cannabis registration application.
Thank you. We obviously have a few little discrepancies here, so I, first question would be, is if I have a...
I'm so moved.
And then, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries for denial of 3-2. Would you like to read into the record the appeal process?
This action is final, this appeal to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days from today's date.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna break for lunch and be back at 1:30.